Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our December 21st, 2011 meeting of the City Council, which is now called to order. Meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two in our closed caption for our hearing-impaired viewers. Please note some Cox -- customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box can view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. These proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV in the web on the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits. Once outside, assemble on the Las Vegas Boulevard side of the property. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the city clerk's office, or at the front of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under the public comment portion, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Pastor Aaron Hansel, Dream Center, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord, we come before you today grateful for this season of celebration and thankful for who you are in our lives. We ask for your wisdom and your hand to lead and guide our leaders today, and may your blessings be upon all the proceedings and decisions that is done by our city officials. Lord, we thank you again for who you are in this season of celebration. Please bless us today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. If you hear a doorbell ring, I forgot to turn off my cellphone. So, it's up there, and I apologize. This is the ceremonial portion of the agenda, and our first item, we're going to recognize December Employee of the Month. I'd like to ask our new municipal court administrator, Matthew Fisk, as well as our retiring court administrator, Jim Carmini, to join us up here at the podium, please. And I am proud, as they are making their way forward, to announce that the December Employee of the Month is Maria Gonzalez. Maria, please come forward. Maria is a court specialist and has been a city employee since 1987, and working for the city keeps you young and beautiful. Maria works in the Municipal Court Compliance Unit that manages house arrest and sentencing requirements. Some of the participants in these programs are completing requirements in conjunction with mandates from our very successful specialty courts that include the Youth Offender Court, DUI Court, and Women in Need Court. Maria is assigned to work the front counter window for the compliance unit, and she represents the city to the public every day. She is the first point of contact for many citizens with court business, and she is consistently exhibiting exceptional service, customer service skills. This is the most difficult position to be in anywhere. Any job is front desk and front greeting. It is an impossible situation because you are always greeting those people sometimes who aren't so happy with your employer. She's always greeting everyone with a smile and a positive attitude, always helps to answer questions. Recently, Maria was approached by a couple who did not speak English, and they were clearly lost. After spending some time with the couple, Maria was able to determine that they had business with the Justice Court Clerk. Maria then took the time to walk the couple to the Justice Court Clerk's office and made sure they were helped. Maria also demonstrates initiative and takes on new projects to make the unit run more efficiently. For example, she has manually gone through ten years of case files, purging old cases, and making it much easier to locate participants' files, resulting in the unit providing better customer service. In addition, Maria is also key in the unit, meeting its goal in fee collections. Since July 1, 2010, Maria has processed more than 1,500 transactions and has collected more than $250,000, and she stayed with us, did not take a vacation on that money. We appreciate Maria's hard work and dedication, and on behalf of the entire City Council, it's a pleasure to name Maria the December 2011 Employee of the Month. Along with this certificate, Maria has received a $100 Visa gift certificate card, compliments of the Nevada Federal Credit Union, and a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of her choice by SuperPond. I'd like to ask Matthew and Jim both to say a few words with -- about Maria. Will we start with the senior most? Yes, we will. Oh, Mr. Carmini.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Maria, you do represent the best of what the city and city employees are all about. What the mayor read is just the tip of the iceberg, is the kind of service you provide to the people that come to our court, some of them not wanting to be there, and many of them like us who got a traffic ticket, and they had to be there. So, I just congratulate you, I'm proud of you, and proud of the work you do, and I wish you the best.
Maria, it's been a pleasure to meet you. I think if you look out, I'm not sure if you saw that your colleagues here, Chief Judge Leung is here today.
If we might, would you please come up as well? We would certainly like to welcome our Muni Court Chief Judge, Leung, who's part of this whole recommendation and process, and we're so honored to have you here, too.
Thank you. I understand it's 20, 25 years with the court, and a 99% accuracy rate. Actually, it was 99.87, so we're still looking for that very small percentage. But, thank you very much, Maria.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure, I would, just briefly. Maria, wow, congratulations. On behalf of all the judges in municipal court, I want to thank you for doing such a fantastic job for the city. You have consistently an outstanding work ethic, and your great attitude, day after day, I think is very inspiring to others. So, congratulations, because you really deserve this recognition today.
Is your family here? Would you both please, daughter and son-in-law, come on up and help recognize your wonderful mother and all that she has been doing? Unless you have too much baggage and you don't want to do that. And would you care to say a few words? Okay. Your daughters, what is your name, please?
Jessica.
Jessica.
DJ.
DJ. Very sharp and number seven. Who's number seven?
Duh.
Okay, thank you very much. It's all right, you didn't know we were going to call you up, but this is such a wonderful honor, and we are so proud of your mom. This is really exciting. So, please, do you feel overworked, overburdened? Tell us a little bit about yourself and how you feel about your job.
Good morning. I'm kind of nervous. I just want to let you guys know that I'm blessed to be working for City of Las Vegas. It's been a blessing, and it's also been a blessing working for the municipal court. There's a lot of hard-working people working in municipal court. I have a lot of great teamwork, and my coworkers are very wonderful. And bless you, and thank you.
We are so proud, and we have a city recognition plaque for Maria and as Employee of the Month, which we would like to give to you, that will keep you so happy over these holidays. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and good health and good safety to all of you. We're so proud of you. You make this city all that it is. Thank you very, very much. For our next item, I have the honor of recognizing the accomplishments of a very extraordinary young man. To help in making this presentation, I would like to ask Nevada Civil Air Patrol Vice Commander, Lieutenant Colonel J. Roberts, and Civil Air Patrol First Lieutenant, and one of our own Deputy City Marshal, David Comson, to join us up here at the podium. The young man we are recognizing today is Civil Air Patrol Cadet Brandon Colts. Brandon, please join us. Thank you. Brandon Coltus attends Palo Verde High School and recently completed a milestone in the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program, earning the Amelia Earhart Award. This prestigious award requires cadets to live up to the Earhart Standard of Excellence. They must also pass comprehensive leadership and aerospace exams, as well as a rigorous physical fitness test. He's cute, too. Of course, this prize honor is named after Amelia Earhart, the groundbreaking woman aviation pioneer who set many records for women aviators and was lost while attempting to become the first woman to circumnavigate the globe. For her first accomplishment, she earned a distinguished Flying Cross from Congress. She had many other honors as well, I am sure. Earhart achievers are looked upon favorably by all of the U.S. Military Service Academies, especially the U.S. Air Force Academy. Of course, Brandon would not have been able to accomplish this without the support of his parents. I would like to ask his mother, Heather, and father, Lieutenant Colonel Jason Coltus, to join us up here at the podium, please. Nothing happens without support of the parents. How wonderful. We're very excited to have you here. We're honored to have Lieutenant Colonel Coltus join us today, as he is one of our Thunderbird pilots at Nellis. And this is really exciting, to have someone who we have seen up in the air behind one of those seats in one of the Thunderbirds, and I just wish I knew which number yours was. Wherever I travel around the world, everyone knows two things about Las Vegas. The first is that we have showgirls, but the most important piece is that we are home to the fabulous Thunderbirds. We thank you both for being here today, and I know how proud you are of your son. Now, I want to present Brandon with the beautiful framed award that we have. If you could hold it, councilman, please. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Colonel Roberts to say a few words about this accomplishment, then we'll hear from Brandon's parents, and Brandon then himself.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Just a few words. The award itself really signifies Brandon's move from the command phase into the executive phase of Civil Air Patrol leadership, and it's quite an accomplishment. In addition to that, our mission here in the state of Nevada, as well as throughout the United States, is one of emergency services, where we assist in disaster relief, and we fly search and rescue missions. In addition to that, we have the Aerospace Education Program, and of course, the Cadet Program. The leadership program that Brandon and thousands of others are going through helps our young people not only develop their communication skills and their leadership skills, but also their character and their understanding of ethics. Regardless of whether they may go into the military, whether they may go into other forms of public service, or the private sector, these lessons will serve them well. Just as a point, next week, when most of the other Clark County students are enjoying their holiday, Brandon and 31 other cadets will be attending the Leadership, Regional Leadership School at Naval Air Station Fallon, Nevada, where for a seven-day period of time, they will learn additional skills in communication, in leadership techniques, and things of that nature. So, with that, Brandon, congratulations, and very well done. I'd now like to have his commanding officer.
Yes, yes. Dave.
I really don't have a whole lot to say what hasn't already been said by Mrs. Mayor and Lieutenant Colonel, so I would like to say, Captain Coltus, congratulations. You've earned this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as you all know, this wonderful gentleman is one of our city marshals, and has been with us how many years?
Twelve years.
Twelve years, so we're really excited. Mom and Dad, before we give you your wonderful award, wow, what an honor to have you here. We're all so very, very proud of how you serve our country and make us all so proud. So, Dad, I know the proudest thing you have is your feelings for this wonderful son.
Thank you, ma'am, and fellow councilmen, for having us here today. It's a great opportunity to come up here and recognize Brandon for his hard work. He has set a great example for the fellow cadets in his program, as well as my other boys that are very much engaged throughout the city as well. We appreciate your work and the different things that you do throughout the city. With my other son and scouts, we study environmental sciences and some of the initiatives that you do and perform throughout the city, so your leadership is greatly appreciated, and it emulates, it allows us, our kids, to emulate the hard work that you do in their programs as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mom, behind everybody in the house, everybody in life is the mom. So, Mom, he's your eldest?
He is.
Okay. You have to say a few words. Was he a perfect child getting this far? Or was he the renegade? Or did you never tell his father?
No, he's a pretty good son, I tell you, up until he crashed our truck last week, so. But we'll forgive him for that. But no, we're very proud of Brandon and all the people that have helped him get here. It's not a one-man show. He didn't do this on his own. We thank the leadership of Civil Air Patrol for mentoring him and guiding him in all that he does, and for giving him, you know, an outlet to get him off the streets. So, Civil Air Patrol is a great program, and it's been a great thing to teach him leadership and ethics and core values, and hopefully, it's given him a sense of service that he wants to continue and hopefully go into the military someday. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're so proud. I mean, this is awesome. I'm hopeful that you're going to end up, of course, in the U.S. Air Force. I mean, is there after you for everything else? Now, if you and I, before I give you this wonderful award, I'm wondering if you would tell us the names of your brothers? Do you have a sister, too?
No.
No sister? Great, no competition for you. So, we might ask them to come up, too? And if you would announce their names?
Hunter is my brother in the red shirt, and then I have Parker over here, he's the third youngest in the green, and then Carson is the youngest kid we have, and he's going in the brown.
How exciting, what a wonderful family. Well, now I want to present you, Brandon, with this beautiful framed award, and I'd like to ask, if I may, our mayor pro tem, to read it.
Thank you, Mayor. The Amelia Earhart Award, be it known that Brandon Coltus has satisfactorily completed all requirements and is entitled to the Amelia Earhart Award given at the National Headquarters Civil Air Patrol Auxiliary of the United States Air Force, the 7th day of November 2011. Congratulations.
Okay. Are we ready? Now, we know he's the oldest in the family, so you always have to listen to him. Can we handle it one more time? Okay. Brandon, a few words?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you, thank everyone who's helped me, thank my parents, because they've driven me countless nights across the city to Civil Air Patrol, back and forth, and just all my leadership that who's helped me get this far, mentoring me and instructing me the ways that they've done it, because they've all been through the program, and so I just thank them for that. And then I just look forward to continuing on with Civil Air Patrol and hopefully continuing my education into the Air Force Academy and into the military to help serve my country like my father.
Wonderful. And the beauty is, you have, and we'll get you off the ground, no more truck crashing, because you can do it all up in the sky, there's no traffic up there. So, we congratulate you. I know our city council is so proud, proud of your father for what he has been doing all these years, proud of Mom. I'm sure she's involved, as well as taking care of the four of you, and we are most proud of you. And what a wonderful, deserved honor. We wish you the best. We know you'll be at the Air Force Academy, and I know you must be very proud, all of you. You have big boots to fill. So, keep going, all of you. Thank you. Congratulations to you. For our final item, Councilwoman Tarkania is going to recognize a group of phenomenal volunteers who have helped transform some wonderful park. I have no idea where that is. I think I live near it.
Yes, you do. Very nerd. It is not often in life that we are the recipient of generosity that has a profound impact on the everyday lives of thousands of people, young and old, families, sport enthusiasts, health-conscious individuals, and those who like to luxuriate in the peace and the beauty of nature. On October 7th, 8th, and 10th, more than 700 youth and adult volunteers from local congregations of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints teamed up to make much-needed renovations to Bob Baskin Park. The local stake's youth conference was looking for a volunteer project, and our 40-year-old park on West Oke, in much need of renovations, was just the project they wanted. I don't know if we have any pictures that are showing. Oh, yes, we do, so you can see some of the work that was being done. The volunteers, who are from the Las Vegas Red Rock Stake and Sandstone Stake, collaborated with local businesses, some of whom are with us today. They donated equipment and materials for this massive undertaking. It included trimming and replacing diseased trees, planting new landscape, installing new water lines, re-roofing picnic table huts, painting the play equipment and surrounding park walls, putting in sod and new ground cover, and building a new shade cover, and really much more. It was a massive undertaking. I was so impressed to see all these individuals work so hard. I would like to call up a few of those who helped us in this massive undertaking, which is a blend of business, church, youth, city. It was a beautiful example of what we need to do on a volunteer basis. So, first, I'd like to ask Alan Slaughter, the president of the Sandstone Stake, if he would come up here, and also Jeffrey Parker, president of the Red Rock Stake, and our two youth leaders, Carrie Ralph, excuse me, Carly Ralph, and Dylan Dudley, youth conference chairman of the Sandstone Stake. And we could just come over here, and because I'm having a lot come up here. This lady, I saw her everywhere, working so hard, and he also. And the project chairman, Michelle de la Vega, and Mitchell Barnes. Mac McKnight, the project facilitator, and Bob Coyle from Republic Services. Gary Radmal of Green Valley Landscaping. Ryan Brooksby of Ryan's Tree Care. And look at Ryan. I've, you know, I have, I just must tell you, I have all, I've had a lot of experience beating with tough athletes, big, tall, muscular basketball players and football players. This guy, he worked from before dawn until the night in that little thing where you're cutting all the branches off. I don't know how he did it. He just worked endlessly. And Richard Worthen of Dick Worthen Distributing. And we have Bob Coyle up here, right? Okay, thank you. These youth leaders handled the recruitment, the engagement, the organization, and follow-up of many stations of work. If you are seeing a film in back of you, I can tell you what they did was, when they first came to you, and Mac first came to me, Mac, raise your hand there, the project coordinator, when he first came to me and wanted a project, I mentioned a few projects to him, but he went back to the youth, and it wasn't big enough. They wanted to do something significant, something that would be lasting there, that they would know they made this contribution. So, finally, we ended up talking about the park, and then he told me he was going to have these 700 volunteers, and having been involved in school activities, and knowing how complicated it can be with 700 youth working together, I didn't, I sort of was a little dubious, but then he came to me with all this organization showing compact little groups with each leader, so that one group would be working on planting flowers here, another group would be helping trim trees, the bottom parts, the top parts were done by Ryan's Tree, and all kinds of things like that. They were terribly organized. I thought I could take a few lessons from it, to tell you the truth. But I walked the park several times as they worked, with Carly and Dylan, and they worked, and then they reworked their plans to meet adjustments that were needed. As the hundreds did their work, it was like a swarm of bees. They had these yellow jackets on, these safety jackets. I was there before they all came, and I had to go to a meeting. I came back again, and it was like a beehive, because I saw these little group of bees going here, and another there. Everyone organized in what they needed to do. Not once, not once did I hear any one of these young people grumble about the task given them. Not once did I hear, oh, couldn't I paint instead of pull weeds or something like that? It was absolutely magnificent, the heart that they gave to all this. They displayed a sense of enthusiasm and great problem-solving skills when they needed to. I'm so proud. I really, truly am so proud of all the young people who volunteered their time to give back to our community. And we also appreciate our city staff who helped us, too, because we needed their help. This was a true example of a public-private partnership of businesses, nonprofit agencies, residents, and city staff coming together to assist our community during hard economic times. I believe very strongly, this is the way we're going to be able to overcome some of these problems we face now. We will work together, we will be strong together. Now, the total value of their time, I was told, that this information was given by city staff, the total value of their time, talents, and equipment was well over $500,000, or half a million dollars. That's a lot of effort and time from the businesses. And you may ask why? We all want to be part of making the world a better place. Volunteers have cleaned up projects across the city, but I must say, we have never had so many mobilized at one given time. I'd also like to recognize some who couldn't be here today, who helped and contributed materials and equipment. Don Ahearn of Ahearn Equipment Rental, Brent Wright and Debiel Bartlett of Wright Engineers, Paul Geramello of Par3 Landscaping, Vern Christensen and Carl Camp of NRC Concrete and Landscaping. And they are continuing to tweak little things in the park, and each time I go there, it looks more beautiful than before. And now, I'd like to it looks more beautiful than before. And now, I'd like to ask you to help me distribute these, if I could. And then I'm going to ask our state leaders to talk, but I wanted to give them out, if we could, today. Each one of these certificates of recognition that we're distributing says, "The mayor and members of the Las Vegas City Council convey their appreciation for your volunteer efforts on the Bob Baskin Park renovation project. Your hard work and dedication have ensured the park continues to be a place where families and friends can relax and play in the heart of Las Vegas." And I just wanted to, if you would, yes, you can. This is for Alan Slaughter, the other volunteers, and Jeffrey Parker, and Carly Ralph. Look at how sweet her smile is. She kept it on, doing all that hard work, even if she was covered with dirt from head to toe. And Dylan Dudley, Gary Radmell, Ryan Brooksby, Richard Worthing, Mac McKnight. And then we also have some certificates. Yes, there are contributors. Brent Wright, Wright Engineers, well, he may not be here today. Okay. And Daniel Bartlett. Those are the ones I was, but let's say their name again. Paul Jeremelo, yes. He's not here. I know him. He, 37 years ago, I think, he helped build my house. Carl Camp, Vern Christensen. I'm just fortunate we had all of you guys here today. Don Ahearn, I know he couldn't come. Bob Coyle of Republic Services. And Bob, he's always here to help us and support us. Mitchell Barnes, and Michelle de la Vega. And then these, I'm going to leave with the stake presidents and Mac. These are volunteer recognition, they're sort of paper holders, and we'd like to give those to those who couldn't be here today and who deserve special recognition, too. If you saw the massive, I think Bob Coffin, you were out there, weren't you, Bob? Bob Coffin? Bob, you were out there, and you saw some of that. So I wanted to call him Bob, because I know he came out there and he saw, and I think maybe you were there, Ricky, for a period, you dropped by. But in any case, we want to also give to those who helped in other ways that weren't, be able to come today. And now I'd like to ask Alan Slaughter, President of the Sandstone Stake, if he would speak a bit on what this is all about, what your goals are, and how come you think you have such a great group of young children that are so willing to help others?
Well, thank you for being told I wouldn't have to say anything. I'll try to be, well, it came from another source, you know, but I'm honored to be able to represent this wonderful group of individuals. And President Parker, perhaps a little bit of explanation is due. When we talk about being a stake, or in our case, as stake presidents, we are both individually over several congregations of members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Our stakes comprise anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 members, and so collectively, we were grateful to accept this kind of an opportunity. Certainly, I don't think that anybody anticipated any kind of acknowledgement or recognition, but I am honored, I think, to be able to speak on behalf of everyone who was involved and say how grateful we are for this opportunity. If you could forgive a personal note on this, I remember when Bob Baskin Park was desert. Being born in Las Vegas and having been brought up a block away from there, it brought back tender feelings to my heart to be able to see this wonderful place restored, which was many years ago that I played there as a child, not that many, but I am grateful for the service that has been done by so many of these young people. 700 people, I think, was a number that was projected. And what we have tried to do for youth in our church is to be able to provide them with opportunities to give back to their community and to be able to share things that provide them the opportunity to be good citizens. I don't think with any expectation of acknowledgement, but with a hope that they may be able to give back in some way for those who've given so much for them. So I really don't know what else to say other than thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian. You have just been a blessing. It's just for those who've had an opportunity to rub shoulders with you and to be able to feel what a special person you are, rather than a person sitting in a leadership position that we just get to watch occasionally, to be able to feel of your kindness and your love for our community, and to be able to share that with us and be such a positive example to these young people and adults who were involved. This stack of certificates that were offered to those, what a group of generous individuals, but they too gave because they love this community. And Mayor Goodman, thank you for the opportunity for us to be involved in this. Certainly, if the park ends up as good of experience for those who have the opportunity to enjoy it, as it has been for us to serve, we'll all feel greatly blessed. So thank you very much.
And Jeffrey, did you want to say if you were Jeffrey Parker, who's President of the Red Rock Stake?
First of all, I would like to say I'm grateful for the words of President Slaughter. He summarized things very well. But I am so grateful for the opportunity that you've given us, that the City of Las Vegas, that Mayor Goodman, that Councilwoman Tarkanian have given us to be able, and the other council members have given us to be able to provide this service, without your willingness to trust us, which that took a lot of courage, I would say. But this would not have been possible. The opportunity to provide service is an opportunity to allow the young people of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to build character. It's an opportunity for them to be able to use the God-given talents and gifts that they have to be able to help others and to strengthen others and to strengthen themselves. You've given us an opportunity to increase in our love for our community in this great city of Las Vegas. It's a prized and wonderful opportunity, and we express our gratitude to you for that. The young people that came out were so excited to be able to do this. They were so pleased for the opportunity, and like you said, they didn't complain. They were there to take something that had deteriorated over time and to make it better. And that is certainly the goal of this entire great City Council. And we are so pleased to be a tiny little part of that, and we thank you, and we hope that you will give us other opportunities to serve in this community. Thank you so much.
And I would say, when you say other opportunities, you've already started on that. As I understand, your community garden that you're working on, community gardens in different places. I just want to reemphasize again, I've worked on many projects. I've worked on projects where you get all messed up, and I've worked on projects where you sit neatly behind a desk and do writing. But I want to just say, they all look really clean today, here are these kids and everything. I saw them covered with dust and sweat, and just with that, you know, energy to keep on going, I was so very impressed. It was one of the finest volunteer groups with which I've ever worked, and I want to have a big round of applause as we say, "Thank you very much."
And that will end the ceremonial portion, and we will continue right into the next portion of the morning's agenda. All right, we are continuing right on. We are on Agenda Number Eight, but before we move right there, I know Mayor Pro Tem Anthony has a recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to recognize a group of our future leaders here in Las Vegas, Boy Scout Troop 422 from the Northwest Las Vegas. These young men are Boy Scouts, and they're advancing through their Eagle Scout merit badges. They have to get 21 merit badges in order to become Eagle Scouts, which is the highest honor you can get in the area of Boy Scouts. And today, they are here working on their citizenship in the community merit badge. They're here to attend the morning session of the City Council meeting, and then at our break, they're going to come up to my office, and they're going to grill me with questions on local government and whatever else they want to talk to me about. So I'm honored to have these kids here, because these are the ones that are going to lead this city in the future. And if I could have you stand and be recognized when I call your name, the leader is Howard Hales, Josh Skousen, Nathan Hales, Ryan Wren, Josh Squires, and Josh Hales. On behalf of the Mayor and City Council, I want to welcome all of you, and congratulations on moving forward, and I'm pretty confident you're going to be Eagle Scouts in the future. And I'm going to ask the Mayor and City Council to autograph one of our agendas, and I'm going to give that to you today, so you can prove to whoever you need to prove that you are here. So thanks for coming here, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We will now move on to Agenda Item Eight. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute, and I have here a card from Margaret Coleman, among others. So please.
Good morning. I'd like to wish you Merry Christmas, because I don't know if I'll see you. I'm here today to represent the President of the United States for his duties, order, and jobs. My interpretation is the same as his. I'm here to present a court order that I have done for over, say, what, nine months, and this court order should be honored. And it is, I'm bound to do this duty because it is my job, and the order should be followed because it was issued and handed down by a chief judicial judge, and for it to be honored. And I feel as though I had submitted a letter to you for me to receive recommendation as far as the key to the city.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we're limited to a minute, but at the appropriate time, we would certainly welcome you back to the podium.
I appreciate you giving me that opportunity.
Anyone else that wishes to speak during this portion of the agenda, please? And we will see you later. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please state your name.
Is there any way that I could come to your chambers or your office?
Why don't you, if you will, have a seat, and I'll make sure I come to you at the lunch break.
I'm talking personally to you.
Right now, this is in front of the whole City Council, and we have a very heavy agenda. If you would please hold that for later, thank you. All right. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Hassan Joshua Collins. I'm a public minister for the Lord Jesus Christ. Good to see you again. Just comment on Item Number 32 and as well as similar items about the off-sale sale of temporary beer, wine, and color license here. Texting has been recently banned because of many people, when they're driving, text, you know, because people are getting killed, you know, texting and all that. And just consider the fact that how many people are dying because they're drinking alcohol and driving? And I know that a lot of times lawmakers will act when people are dying, and just remember how many people are dying from DUIs, and I just encourage, you know, not approving such licenses to keep people sober, because a lot of people can't handle their liquor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number 16, oh, I'm sorry, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On Item Number 16, could somebody explain that a little bit, and for the future development of affordable housing, it says. Is this in conjunction with Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority? Are these projects shovel-ready? Could somebody fill us in on that?
Thank you. I think as we hit the agenda, you will have an opportunity there. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
My name is Ed Hart, 123 St. David. I just want to congratulate you on, you know, the final, finalizing the Zappo in the city and whatever. That's a beautiful thing, and I just want to say congratulations, and I hope it moves forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. We'll move on now to Item Number Nine. Item Nine, Business Item for Possible Action. Any items from this morning's session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number 37, Special Event Alcoholic Beverage License for First Friday Las Vegas LLC, 500 Fremont Street, requested by staff to strike that item. Item Number 47, Appeal of Work Hard Denial for Jorge Carrillo at Culinary Arts Catering, 317 South Bellevue Boulevard. Staff has requested that be stricken. Item Number 54, Bill Number 2011-46, abeyance to the February 1st, 2012, meeting by the recommending committee, which occurred on December 20th. And that will be my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 10, To Approve the Final Minutes by Reference of the Regular City Council Meeting of December 7th, 2011. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are moving on to the Consent Agenda. Items 11 through 44, with the exception of 16. 16, 37, 47, 54, which were just noted. The items 11 through 44, with those omissions, the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes brought forward?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Barlow.
Item number 14 and item number 34.
Okay. So, with those added to our list, or do we take the stricken ones out? Just, okay. So, there's them. Councilman Anthony?
Okay, my motion is to approve the consent agenda for items 11 through 44, except for item 14 and 16 and 34, which will be held separately. Item number 37 was stricken. So, that's my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Thank you very much. Item, Agenda Item Number 14, sidewalk infill project will increase, this is about possible action, to approve 2,200,000 in community development block grant, CDBG. Construction funds for the sidewalk infill project to construct sidewalks with ADA ramps, curves, and gutters in CDBG, eligible census tracts, wards three and five, Councilman Barlow and Coffin. You wanted to make, oh, Ms. Dart.
Thank you. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director Economic and Urban Development. I'd be glad to answer any questions, Councilman.
Yes, you can just give a brief synopsis of what item 14 represent for Mr. Farlow.
Certainly. Item 14 is allocating some of our federal funds we've received from Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program. We can use those funds for public services. We can also use those funds for community improvements, which include infrastructure projects. So, we're electing to use some of our annual allocation from HUD for these, this project. It's actually a Public Works project. We've been working very closely with Public Works in identifying areas within the city, primarily in the older neighborhoods in downtown and surrounding downtown, where sidewalks are either lacking, deficient, or in need of repair to bring up to compliance with ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act standards. There are two areas specifically which we're funding with this grant. One is Area 1, which is located in Ward 3, and the other is Area 6, which is located near Ward, Councilman, Ward 5. If there are any specific questions about the scope of the project, Jorge Sarantes, our Public Works Director, is here to answer any specific questions about scope.
Thank you. With that saying, with that being said, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions of the side.
Could I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Now, you determine CDBG how? Where, you CDBG areas are determined how?
There, there are generally two ways. One is meeting the needs of a household, and that's determined by income level. The other way, which is how we're designating, meeting one of the federal requirements, is by identifying areas that are lower or moderate income. Those are generally determined by census data. We haven't gotten the update from the 2010 census, so we're working with the American Community Survey, which is part of that process, in updating our census tracts. But generally, those areas that are eligible for use of these funds are determined by census data.
Well, and I know that we haven't, we haven't used our census data yet, but are we going to be using it soon? Because in Ward 1, aren't, we're the only older district that hasn't been getting these CDBG funds. Is there, when would we be getting it? Because I know you and I have talked that we do have areas that qualify. Have they qualified? Are we in it now, or when is this going to occur? If we have to wait until that census data is used, I'm concerned.
We're, there's two answers. One is today, even before we get the updates with the census, there are some areas that are in Ward 1 that are eligible, and we have those mapped. With the new data coming through the American Community Survey, we're working with the Planning Department, and we don't get direction from HUD on this. We actually have to submit, instead of it coming top-down, it's really bottom-up. We, as the entitlement community that gets the grant award, have to submit the map and say, these areas, based on the, the census data, are now eligible, and we'd like to add them. So, we're working on that, so we can have a formal submission to HUD to include the areas. I don't have an answer today of whether or not there's going to be a lot of additional area in Ward 1, but we are working on that today.
Well, would there be, when we say we're working on it, how long more is it going to take? Because we've been working on this a while.
We're submitting something to HUD fairly soon, I would think, within the next few weeks. It'll basically depend on the response from HUD.
I know there's great needs in wards 3 and 5, but we also have some in 1, so I want to be sure that that's considered. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Dart. If you will just remain there, because now we're moving on to item 16 for possi, pardon? I'm so sorry. A motion on 14. There is a motion, and please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 16, for possible action to approve receiving a total allocation of the fiscal year 2012, low-income housing trust funds, LIHTF, in the amount of $545,350 through an amended and restated agreement with the State and Nevada Department of Business and Industry Housing Division, NHD, for the future development of affordable housing. This applies to all wards. And Mr. Barlow had made a question on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This, these funds, unlike the preceding items, are not HUD funds. They're actually state funds. This state funds a funds called Low Income Housing Trust Funds. And essentially, the city uses these in funding nonprofit projects, nonprofit housing projects developed within the city. This item is to accept an additional $308,668 from the state to support projects. Through this item, you're not approving a specific project. You're just approving the funding allocation. And I did, during a break, answer Mr. Farlow's question. He asked, are these funds going to the housing authority? Typically, they do not. The typical arrangement is that we fund a nonprofit housing developer, and we have a number of developers that have done successful projects within the city.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? Is there a motion, please, to accept on number 16?
Motion to approve item 16.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. And the other one that was pulled was to strike item, oh, excuse me, about item 34.
Thirty.
First, item 34, for possible action to approve an extension of a temporary burglar alarm service license and a temporary locksmith license. Cook Security Company, Inc., DBA Cook Security Group, Inc., 5841 SE International Way. Brian Cook, President, Molly Angelo, CFO, Shawna Cook, Secretary, and William Comer, Director, Milwaukee, O.R. So, if you would, Ms. Duddleston, please state your name and explain this one.
Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Director.
Mayor, if I may interject.
Please.
The reason I asked this to be pulled was there was no ward, and so my question was just to get an understanding as to what ward this was in. It's not stated in the agenda, on the agenda.
Yes. This is, Cook Security is actually located in Milwaukee, Oregon. They are an out-of-state burglar alarm system. They only work on government and financial institutions, so they are just coming down here to do some specific contracts with government agencies and some of the banking institutions. So, they are getting a business license in order to perform on just those specific contracts that they have here in Las Vegas.
Okay. That was the only question that I had in relation to this.
Councilman Barlow, would you care to make a motion, then?
Yes, move for approval.
Move for approval. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item 37 has been stricken. So, does, that does not need a vote? And we've done that. So, moving on to item 45. Item 45 is in the administrative area. Discussion for possible action on the ratification of Nancy Deener as Director of the Office of Cultural Services. Ms. Fratwell, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to recommend this morning a ratification of Nancy Deener as the Director of our cultural office in the city of Las Vegas. Nancy has an incredible background, and I know all of you know her personally, because she's been working here for well over 20 years. And she has a Bachelor's in Fine Arts and a Master's in Fine Arts, is an accomplished artist herself, and has really led what I consider to be a major sea change in our cultural offerings in the city of Las Vegas. She's worked her way up through the organization, from being an Assistant Manager to being a Manager, and now the Director of this function. What may be a little invisible to people is that this is a pretty large function, with several cultural facilities that are being managed by her. And I think you can see some of the real ingenuity that she brings to our community, just in the massive success that we've seen in the recent development and opportunities that are happening at the Fifth Street School. Not to mention, just this week, we were having a groundbreaking on the Neon Museum. She's been working for around 10 years on the Mob Museum, from its inception to where we are today, practically opening that building. She's looked at as a leader in the arts and culture community, not just here, but across the state. She was recognized by the Governor with the Award of Distinction about five years ago, and she was, that was a fitting recognition of what she's been able to do for the arts and culture community in, in our city. It's, it's my honor, really, to present her here today for your consideration for ratification of this post. Nancy, I'd love to have you come join me, if you would, please. While she's walking up, you know, not only has Nancy accomplished personally, but some of the programs that she's let her folks lead have been incredible. We've been recognized for our new youth arts, our new Directions art youth program by the White House. That was just a couple of years ago. You all are very aware of the success of First Fridays. Nancy and her team started that off as the Gateway Arts Festival many years ago, and now it's turned into a thriving nonprofit cultural attraction and festival in our town. The, the book festival for the children, we just held a couple of weeks ago downtown. Downtown was teeming on Saturday and Sunday with kids and parents, all enjoying Fifth Street School and some fantastic offerings there. So, I could go on and on. Nancy's done an incredible job, and I think she'll continue to do that in the position, and I'm really excited to have her lead this effort for our city.
I think we're all very excited, too. Your reputation is stellar. You're easy to work with. You follow through, and to me, that is a sign of a great, great person. And knowing your artistic bent and your leanings and all that you've accomplished over these years, I think it's very exciting to have you as a recognized member of the staff. I'm sure other council people would like to make some comment. And if not, do you, do you have anything that you say that you envision for the future, and would you please state your name first?
My name, my name is Nancy Deener, Acting Director of the Office of Cultural Affairs. And I think we're, the future is so bright for Las Vegas. Arts and culture are very unique in cities and in communities, because they sit at the intersection of quality of life and economic development. And that's a very fine line that depends on the responsiveness of government. And I'm proud to say that our city, I, all the staff at the office, both Mayor Goodman's, Betsy Scott, everybody has, has realized the vision and what arts and culture can do for our community, not just downtown, but in all the wards, in the whole community. And so, you know, I really would like to say thank you to everybody. I'd like to say thank you, Betsy, for always believing in what we're doing. And to Oscar, if you please tell him, I would say very much thank you. But also, I'd like to say thank you to our staff. We have great staff. I'd like to especially say thank you to Patricia Harris. My head's often in the clouds, and her feet are on the ground. I depend on that, or I'd go right off the cliff. So, I think the future is bright. This is the year of downtown. We are who we are. We are proud of our culture. It's beyond the tourism. It is a rich tapestry woven of everybody who has ever lived in this community. And with the Neon Museum, you know, you can just tell that people are proud of our heritage. So, it's a great time to be a Las Vagan.
Beautifully said. Is there a motion, please?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to make a motion to ratify Nancy Deener as the Director of the Office of Cultural Affairs.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Congratulations. Welcome. Thank you, Betsy. Thank you. Moving on to item number 46, report on the proposed repository for high-level nuclear waste at Yucca Mountain from Bob Halsted, Executive Director in the Nevada Agency for Nuclear Projects, and Irene Navis, Emergency Manager for Clark County. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, council members. For the record, Ted Olivas, Director of Administrative Services. First off, I'd like to congratulate Nancy on that appointment. She's been a wonderful coworker. Today, we have Bob Halsted and Irene Navis to provide their annual Yucca Mountain update for you. Bob is the new Executive Director of the State of Nevada's Agency for Nuclear Projects. Prior to that appointment, he was a consultant to the state on Yucca Mountain issues. So, he has a lot of history. Many of you have seen Irene Navis in the past. She is the Emergency Manager for Clark County. Has worked on Yucca Mountain issues for many years, coordinating the efforts, particularly in Southern Nevada, with all of the jurisdictions. As you know, the city has always been opposed to the storage of nuclear waste at Yucca Mountain. We remain committed in our opposition to that, at the federal, state, and local levels, of course. Before their presentation, Mr. Halsted has a few handouts for the record that I wanted to submit. The first is his comments to the Blue Ribbon Commission on America's Nuclear Future, which were presented on December 2nd of this year. And the second is his comments on behalf of the state to the Department of Energy in opposition to the proposed shipment of low-level radioactive waste and mixed low-level radioactive waste to Nevada Nuclear Security Site through Las Vegas. The city, as you know, Mayor Goodman, sent similar comments in opposition to this as well. So, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Olivas. Welcome.
Thank you, Ted. See, are we on here?
You're on. Please state your name, even though I was said. Thank you.
My name is Robert J. Halsted. I'm Executive Director of the Nevada Agency for Nuclear Projects. It is indeed a pleasure to be in this chamber again. The last time I was here, it was as a transportation advisor to the agency, and we were talking about potential impacts on Yucca Mountain, of Yucca Mountain shipments on Las Vegas. And it's a pleasure for me to be here with Mayor Goodman, all of you members of the council, and particularly want to acknowledge Councilwoman Tarkanian's work with the Commission for Nuclear Projects. I think the most important thing I can say to you is that we really appreciate the support that the city has given to the state in this fight, and it's really important, support that has been important, not just in the state, but out of state. I remember working with Mayor Oscar Goodman at the National League of Cities Meeting in 2006, on a very important resolution that made other cities aware about the impacts of the shipments to Yucca Mountain, not just on Las Vegas, but cities across the country. I'm going to be briefed this morning. The good news is, we're in the best position we've been in in 24 years, and maybe we can see the end of this fight. And the bad news is that the fight is not over, because there is a federal lawsuit being brought by Aiken County, South Carolina, supported by the states of South Carolina and Washington, and also by the Nuclear Energy Institute, which speaks for the industry. And their intent is to force a resumption of the license application process at the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. Now, currently, the Department of Energy's Yucca Mountain Now, currently, the Department of Energy's Yucca Mountain project is terminated, and we can thank the Obama Administration and Senator Harry Reid, and frankly, our entire Congressional delegation has been very good on this issue by eliminating the funding for that project. And they've had to do another round of it last week during the budget discussions. There were still efforts by the pro-Yucca crowd to restore funding. And of course, the licensing proceeding at the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has been stopped because, again, of the Congressional appropriations being cut. But this is the conundrum that we face now, that the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit is considering a case. Briefing's going to be completed next month, and oral argument's been set for May, and frankly, we expect a decision before the summer. And given a previous opinion from one of the judges on that court, it's quite possible that they will order the Nuclear Regulatory Commission to resume licensing. On the other hand, there are no funds for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, thanks to our Congressional delegation. So, we're going to have to be watching this very closely. Now, in the meantime, on a positive approach to solving the nuclear waste problem, the bipartisan Blue Ribbon Commission on America's Nuclear Future is scheduled to issue their final report at the end of January. We strongly support their approach, that a consent-based approach to picking a site for a repository should be followed. That is, it's not only got to be technically safe, it's got to be acceptable to the people who live there, and also their proposal to take the program out of the Department of Energy. And it appears that their final report is going to adopt a number of the transportation safety recommendations that we've made over the years. They also point out that there is little likelihood of nuclear fuel reprocessing in the United States in the next decade. And I mention this because from time to time, you hear proposals for nuclear waste reprocessing at Yucca Mountain. It's an even worse site for reprocessing than it is for geologic disposal because of the seismic hazards, the limited water supply, and of course, the poor transportation access, which would, again, likely result in spent fuel shipments through Las Vegas. One other item, last summer, the Department of Energy put out a draft environmental impact statement for the future of the Nevada Nuclear Security Site. There are many items of interest in there. The great item of concern is the department's proposal that they would like to have the option to ship thousands of low-level waste and mixed-low-level waste shipments through the city. Low-level waste is something of a misnomer, as about forty percent of these shipments actually have considerable quantities of radionuclides of serious concern, like strontium-90. We appreciate the fact that the city has taken a strong position against that in their comments, as has Clark County and the state. And I'd just like to conclude by, again, saying how important the support of the city and the support of Clark County have been to the state, and I hope that we'll continue to work together and that united, we're going to win this fight. Maybe next year, I'll be back here giving that report. I hope that's where we'll be.
Thank you, Mr. Halsted. We appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Halsted, first. Please continue.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. My name is Irene Navis, and I am, in addition to being the Emergency Manager for Clark County, I continue to be the Project Manager, Program Manager, for the Nuclear Waste Division, which handles items having to do with Yucca Mountain, as well as the Nevada Test Site, the Nevada National Security Site, now named. I wanted to start my comments out by thanking certain individuals in the city who have helped us in my position over the last decade in particular. It's been my pleasure and honor to work with Betsy Fretwell, and Ted Olivas, and LeAnn Lee, and David Riggelman, and also Richard Wells, who have contributed many, many hours and many, many efforts in support of Clark County's activities. And I just wanted to, of the many folks that we have worked with here at the city, call them out specifically for their support, because we can't do our jobs without them. There's been significant Board of County Commissioners and City Council coordination over the years. As Bob mentioned, it's been so important to present a united front on this issue. This is something that the DOE really struggled with over the years, is the constant and consistent opposition, not only of the public, seventy to seventy-five percent of the public opposed to this project for nearly thirty years, but also the consistent and constant support for fighting this issue from the local elected officials, and that's very much appreciated. We have worked together since 1983, believe it or not, even before Yucca Mountain was singled out as the only site to be studied and designated. Since 1985, Clark County has provided formal resolutions, and I think the city has done the same since about that same timeframe. And we really provided a united front and a showing of strong coordination during the pre-site recommendation activities, where we did a lot of impact assessment work together, where we did a lot of work together from the County Commission Chairman and the Mayor, and the City Council, and the County Commission, to provide very open and very public support for each other's efforts. In addition, we've worked through various committees. We've worked through the city's Yucca Mountain Nuclear Repository Committee, which I understand you'll be discussing in item fifty-two, the Yucca Mountain Advisory Committee for Clark County, the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, of course, the Commission on Nuclear Projects for the state. All of those coordinated efforts have been very important, where we can vet out issues, find areas of common interest, and work together on them. We coordinated an effort at the county level for all of the cities in looking at public safety impacts for fire, for police, and emergency management. Those studies have been peer-reviewed. They have been picked apart by the DOE, and no one has been able to really refute what's been in those studies. And those studies have had a huge impact on how people look at local, impacts to local government, in terms of what do you give up if you have to pour so much more effort into public safety because of these shipments coming towards us? What do you have to give up in terms of county and city services to make up for that? And where do you get that funding to support those efforts in the long term? The other thing that we've looked at is property values and tourism impacts. That was another place where we had a huge impact on the DOE's thinking. They actually revised their final environmental impact statement on Yucca Mountain to acknowledge property value impacts and tourism impacts, which would not have been possible without that united front on all of those issues. We also have done a lot of work on transportation analysis, not only with Bob's help, but county and city staff. We've worked on a commodity flow study that looked at all hazardous materials coming by rail and truck through Clark County and the City of Las Vegas and the other cities. We've done community surveys, and we also developed a joint Community Indicators Monitoring Program that is still used today for other activities. We've actually won a number of awards for our impact assessment and for our public outreach efforts, the city and the county, both. For Clark County's focus for 2011, what we've been working on mostly is closeout of certain of our activities, our impact assessments and our licensing activities, those that were no longer needed for continuing on, because we've been in sort of this limbo position that Bob referenced, between the NRC stopping their activities and the court cases pending. We've kind of wrapped up those activities and ceased operations in those areas. However, we decided to continue our public outreach efforts, because there's so much confusion in the public. It's on, it's off, it's happening, it's not happening. We wanted to make sure that we had clear and concise and accurate information continuing to go out to the public, so that people were kept informed as to the current state of the program. We also have been monitoring the federal actions that Bob referred to. I won't go over those and be repetitive. We have been working on, the biggest project we've been working on is our Lessons Learned and Best Practices, realizing that this might be the end for the Yucca Mountain project, this might be just the beginning for some other community that's going to have to go through the same thing we've just been through for the last three decades. So, because we've done so much cutting-edge work and unique work and first-ever type work in this arena, we decided to put together a video of our subject matter experts, as well as a report. So, excuse me. The video is available now, and our report will be available in January. We have covered impact assessment, data collection, public outreach, technical studies, and the tools, techniques, and methods that we use, that not only were valuable in the Yucca Mountain program, but can be used for other programs as well, so we can leverage our other activities in emergency management, public safety, and other socioeconomic impact studies. We have focused, continue to focus on collaboration, inclusiveness, outreach, and communication with all of our stakeholders, and we hope that all of this work that we've done provides a model and a guide for others who will deal with this issue in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Navis. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it could be answered by either of you. Knowing that we were never going to hold everything anyway, there would have to be other sites. My question is, this lawsuit that has been initiated in South Carolina or by South Carolina, what is the impetus behind that? Do you know?
Well, their argument is that as long as the Nuclear Waste Policy Act is in force, and of course, it is a statute, that there's a schedule that requires the Nuclear Regulatory Commission to continue to evaluate the license application that the Department of Energy submitted, even though the Department of Energy has said that it wants to abandon the program, and there is no funding to proceed. It's frankly, an unprecedented situation. From an opinion that one of the judges on the panel that's hearing the case previously issued, we believe it's prudent to assume that the court may, in fact, order the NRC to proceed, even though the NRC has no appropriated funds to have their staff or their Atomic Safety and Licensing Board, in this case, called a Construction Authorization Board, consider the case. So, it's a very unusual and very difficult-to-predict situation. We are dealing with it by keeping our legal team and our expert witnesses working on the two-hundred-and-twenty contentions. There are also contentions that Clark County and other parties submitted, so that if the licensing process should resume, we would be ready to pose those challenges. And I think it's fair to say that most of the time, at this point in licensing, if the NRC staff has approved the application, you pretty much assume that the NRC is going to approve the license. In this case, that's different. We have a very strong technical case against the license. We have a good legal team, and at the other, on the other side, DOE has lost some of their technical witnesses. So, I think our prospects for prevailing, even if the licensing proceeding resumes, are quite good. But obviously, it's something we would prefer to win without having to go through that process.
Just to add to that, just very briefly, the Department of Energy is kind of in a pickle, because they have made commitments to the utilities, the Nuclear Energy Utilities, to move waste materials, and there've been commitments made to some of those states, the ones that are now suing, to move waste materials. And so, they're sort of in a breach-of-contract, if you will, situation, not only with the utilities, but the states that they've promised those waste materials that were slated to move to Yucca Mountain, would move to Yucca Mountain. So, now that the program has concluded, for all intents and purposes, what is the alternative? And that's the role of the Blue Ribbon Commission, that was started by President Obama and by Congressional action, to look at alternatives for what to do with the nuclear waste materials. And there are many options on the table, including regional facilities, including volunteer states or communities that would step forward, and none of that has been vetted out. The report is still in draft. It's supposed to go final at the end of January, and then it'll take Congressional action to move away from the Nuclear Waste Policy Act and come up with new national policy on radioactive waste materials.
So, South Carolina, really, it's about the breach of contract?
Yes. Essentially, that's the nature of the action. There also are some particular issues that have to do with the defense waste that is the result of weapons production over the past decades in South Carolina, that that waste is being put into a disposal form that was specifically designed for the waste acceptance criteria at Yucca Mountain. But we don't think that in the end, that issue is going to prevail. But again, it is also important to know that the Nuclear Energy Institute has thrown their weight behind this, and frankly, I looked at the briefs that were filed over the last few weeks, and I thought it was a very strong brief that the Nuclear Energy Institute had filed, again, as I mean, said, on behalf of the utilities that have paid into the nuclear waste fund. It is also worth noting that the statute limits the amount of nuclear waste that could be disposed of at Yucca Mountain, to seventy thousand metric tons uranium. And when you add the defense waste and the civilian waste that's already been created, without changing that provision, there would be need for a second repository, anyway. So, the lessons-learned work that Irene talked about is likely to be very important. This is not going to be an easy national problem to resolve. It won't be resolved quickly. We are hoping that because of the bipartisan nature of this Blue Ribbon Commission, that their recommendations will carry some weight, and they've recommended interim storage facilities, which would take some of the time pressure off. So, for years and years, we heard, oh, we have to go forward with Yucca Mountain, or we'll have to shut our reactors down. Not true. And similarly, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, for all the controversy you've heard about in the press, has really made excellent progress in the last three years in developing the fallback plan, which is to make sure that waste is not only stored safely at the reactors where it's being generated, but that that time period can be extended out into the sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty-year range. So, those are some positive developments, for sure.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? May I have a motion? Pardon? Yes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make sure that we understand, when the first atomic shot took off here, it exploded in 1951, we had twenty-five thousand people in the city limits. We now have probably close to six-hundred thousand. A lot of those people don't understand what happens here. They thought, well, the bombs went off for twenty years above ground, and so, or less than that, ten, ten years. But, you know, and then another fifteen years underground. We thought, you know, what's the problem, taking this extra material? You really have to re-educate thousands and thousands of people every year on this issue, and why it is that we fight this. Because a lot of people just don't understand. My hair was jet-black when I first was elected to the Legislature, and nuke waste may have contributed to my white hair. I all blame that. The point is, we just have to keep working this issue and telling people about it, because we were, the thing was rigged from day one, that Nevada was going to get it, because we had taken the bombs, because the bombs had come here, and we did that as our ante in the Cold War, and we were proud, and I was proud as a little kid to watch the bombs go off, and we were all very excited about that. We were very naive. We didn't understand what we were playing with, and the poison that's on the test site now will last there for thousands of years, and slowly migrates, frankly. It moves, the stuff that's above ground. So, to accept more waste and to put it below ground and expect it to stay there forever is naive, and we just have to keep telling people why. I mean, there's a lot of reasons. I don't want to go into it a long way here, just to say that this agency, the state agency, has done a wonderful job with a lot of criticism, particularly from legislators from Northern Nevada and others who wanted to sell out for money for Nevada. And of course, the temptation, the longer the recession goes, the temptation is, well, let's sell out for money. Let's get a hundred million, two-hundred million here, whatever, take care of the problem. Just ask Japan. Just ask Japan how they're going to take care of their problem. It can happen, and I sure am glad this agency has worked hard, and you fought defunding, before you were there, probably. You know that attempts have been made to defund your agency at the state level. Can you imagine that? So, right here in our own area, we've got a lot of people that just don't understand the danger, don't understand why we've fought it. So, you have to keep telling that story over and over. Thank you, Madam.
Glad to say, I appreciate your comments, Councilman. And looking at the population growth issue, we just started working with the 2010 census data, and the routes that the Department of Energy is proposing to use through the spaghetti bowl really come up against population growth there. Our latest calculation is just looking at that portion of the route within the city, within eight-hundred meters or one-half mile on each side of the routes. Got a hundred-and-twenty thousand people living within a half-mile now of the routes that the Department of Energy is proposing to use through the city. So, I think we're going to be able to deny So, I think we're going to be able to deny them the use of those routes, but it's frankly unacceptable that they would even have put that proposal forward in an environmental impact statement and done such a poor job, as the city's and the county's comments make such a good point, pointing out, they shouldn't even be considering things like that because of the population.
Well, and two, because of the longevity, I mean, looking out to generations, we cannot pass this bucket on, and we have to make sure it's stopped at this level, so that great grandchildren and their grandchildren are enjoying a healthy environment. But you two have done an extremely remarkable job. We're very pleased and grateful, and know that all of those in our city staff and at county have just really made sure that this issue will be closed, hopefully. And I see we have a comment, please.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Nevis, thank you. Mr. Halsted.
My name is Andy Harg, I live in One Tudesa David. I'm retired out of the nuclear business, so I can't go into certain details. But Nevada has been dealing with it so much over the years, since back in the 50s, whatever. It was so bad, you know, for the radiation floating around, until there are areas, even until today, is considered as dead zones. I won't go into further than that. Another thing, as the crow fly, they say, that's a straight line, they say it's 90 miles, you know, to Yucca Mountain, but truthfully speaking, as the crow fly, more like 77 miles. That's all I got to say, but we will always have the presence of some radiation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a report only, so no motion is required. Moving on into Planning, 47 has been stricken, and Item 48, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding An Appeal Of Work Card Denial For Willie Daniel Watson, DB at 7-Eleven Food Store, 27111, 6070 West Sahara. This is in Ward 1. Councilwoman Tarkanian, good afternoon. Nope, good morning.
Good morning. Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager.
Detective Mary Lavarna, Metro's Special Investigation Section.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Watson has applied for a work card to be a cashier at 7-Eleven. You have two reports in your confidential binders. Mr. Karamzada, who is the business owner of that 7-Eleven, has provided a letter of support, which details the first report, which deals with incidents in 1989 and also in 2002. The December 13 report addresses areas from 2007 to 2009, and with your permission, I would like Mr. Karamzada to make sure that he has indeed become aware of those events and what is detailed in that report, and he is willing to provide supervision and is supportive of this applicant.
Good morning. Would you please state your name?
Hi, this is Ahmad Karamzada, and I'm here with Willie Watson. I'd like to give him a part-time job, give him a chance to support himself and start livelihood.
And Mr. Watson, would you step forward and state your name, please?
Willie Watson.
Thank you very much.
With that, after consultation with Metro, we are recommending a site-specific work card with a one-year administrative review. The Metropolitan Police Department will be monitoring this location and has agreed to do that on our behalf and report back to us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
First, I wanted to just back up and say, I appreciate your striking number 47 because of the severity of some of the problems that might occur. Secondly, on this item here, the concern I had really was that, why did you lie?
Actually, ma'am, I had a major accident, and a lot of things from like, the incident in 89, I really just blocked out. And in the other incident, when I was in Virginia, my two cousins was murdered, and my two little baby cousins murdered. So, a lot of those things, I really don't really remember as much as the '07 incident. And when I looked at application, it says about the felony, so I'm just thinking just about the felony, that's why.
Okay, except that according to the report, when they asked you why you didn't tell the truth, you said, I thought you wouldn't find it.
I'd say, I thought I didn't, wouldn't know about that. Forget it. I honestly did not really pay attention to those two things for the last couple of years. Whenever I applied for a job or went through anything, it never shows up. And the first instance was when I was in school in 1989. So, I really, I mean, I really basically forgot about that after my accident. And then, like I said, when that incident happened in '03, my two cousins and her two little daughters was murdered, and I really blocked that out. I really don't pay no attention. Whenever I put out an application, I never really put it on application.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, except that you did admit that you didn't tell the truth at that time, but forget that. The, I just wanted to urge you, if you have had problems, be sure to tell the truth. That's all. A lot of people want to help. A lot of people want to give you a second chance, but you just have to be straight, because every time you don't tell the truth, it makes you look worse.
I understand.
And I think that you'd be, this card is for 7-Eleven?
Yes.
And 7-Eleven stores are sort of conducive to some of the problems with which you've had in the past, so I just urge you to follow through, because I will follow the recommendation for approval of the work card. So, that's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Watson. And please do listen to what Councilwoman Tarkanian, not too many times, to get another chance. So, hang in tough. Thank you for employing him. Thank you. Moving on to Item Number 49, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding An Appeal Of A Work Card Denial For Chalina Wright, DBA at the Stratosphere Hotel Casino and Hotel, 2000 South Las Vegas Boulevard, that's in Ward 3. Councilman Coffin is the applicant present. I see you are. Ms. Duddleston?
Yes. Ms. Wright is applied to work on amusement rides at the Stratosphere. I've spoken with the Stratosphere. They have provided a letter of support. She has passed all of her required tests and drug tests, and we are recommending a work card, that we approve the work card, site-specific to the Stratosphere, and we will again do an administrative review in one year to make sure both the applicant and the business are still operating correctly.
Wonderful. Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval.
There's a motion. Please vote. Councilman Coffin, did you do?
Did it come through? Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Good luck. I hope you're not jumping off any of those. Have you?
I can't hear you. What did you say?
You have not been part of those rides yourself?
No, not yet.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Item Number 50, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Appeal Of A Work Card Denial For Matthew Bryan Rogers, DBA, DB at the Ventnor Grill, 10,000 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite 150. This is in Councilman Wolfson's Ward 2. Ms. Duddleston?
Yes. Mr. Rogers has applied to be a server at Ventnor's Grill. Ventnor's Grill is a representative here, and they have also supplied a letter of support. He has also complied with everything that has been asked of him, and we are recommending a site-specific work card, and we will do it one-year administrative review.
Thank you. Would you state your name, please, sir?
Matthew Rogers.
And your support person from Ventnor Grill?
I have Chef Matthew Silverman with me.
Chef Matthew, would you come forward, please, and state your name that you're here?
Matthew Silverman.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Royal Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, thank you. You know, I thought there were two Matthews, because in my briefing yesterday, I saw your name, Matthew Rogers, and I was wondering, is that the Matthew I know? And I said, you know, what is a food runner? And they told me what a food runner does, and I thought that that wasn't the Matthew that I know, and sure enough, the Matthew that I know is standing behind you. So, we got two Matthews. The Matthew that I know, your supervisor, Matthew, is this a good kid?
Yes, sir, he is.
Do you recommend him highly for the position?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And was he truthful throughout this process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My motion is to accept your recommendation and move for approval.
There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Good luck, great food at Ventnor's Chef. Good luck to you. Thank you very much. And now, we will move on to Item 51, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding The Disposition Of Clean Water Coalition, CWC Connection Fees Refunded Back To The City. And Mr. Sarandes?
Good morning, Mayor. Council, Jorge Sarabantes, Department of Public Works. You want me to go ahead and proceed? Before we move forward with this item, Mayor, I'd like to just correct the item and the dollar amount for the record. The correct dollar amount is $4,506,656.
Why is that?
The, that is the amount that was returned on connection fees from the Clean Water Coalition. The $2 million that's shown on here is actually the amount that was the user fee surcharge.
Okay.
Back in September 21st, the council approved the disposition of a portion of the $16 million that was returned from the Clean Water Coalition to the city of Las Vegas. At that meeting, you all approved for us to return 8.8 million back to the Sanitary Enterprise Fund, which originally paid that fee. You also approved for us to return $2.7 million of user surcharge back to the user accounts that paid those amounts. This item today is for the disposition of the connection fees. At your September 21st meeting, you directed us to go back and try to identify the persons that paid those original fees and see if we could find a way to return that funds to them. We have finished that research, and we identified the properties where those fees were assessed to, and our recommendation today is that we refund the money back to those addresses, the property owners, the current property owners of those addresses, and that any funds that come back as undeliverable, that we use that money and credit the sewer account for that address for future charges to that account, and that is our recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from City Council? Please, Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Jorge, thank you to your staff for going the extra mile and making this happen and trying to return this money. To date, it's been a challenge for the city of Las Vegas to get this Clean Water Coalition issue gone entirely, but I think the disposition, these funds, going back to those who hopefully wrote the checks to begin with, is going to be significant, so that they can take that money and reinvest it back into the community. That's what I'd really like to see. So, thank you, Jorge.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I should, I wanted to reemphasize what Councilman Ross said. I think we should really note how hard you have worked to do this fairly and get the money back to the people who gave the money. As we all know, because of moves and because of some things where we can't reach the original people, you made the alternative to the sewer fund, but I just want to say again, this is, I feel, a very strong example of, if you paid the money, and it turns out you don't need it for what you paid it for, it should go back to the people, and that's what you worked very hard to do, to have it go back to the people that gave it. So, I just wanted to say, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Could you also speak to the issue of your assessment about how the new ownership was charged, or your assessment there?
Certainly. The way the money was collected, a portion came out of the agencies that started Clean Water Coalition, provided some initial funding. There was a portion that was connected to individual users' accounts, about $7 a year user fee that we've returned already. The rest of it was connection fee. As new development came in, when they pulled the building permit, at that time, they're assessed a certain fee, depending whether residential, commercial, and that's the portion that today we are asking to refund to those folks that paid that.
And you also said that, to correct me if I'm incorrect, that it is assumed that the, that fee was rolled over as a new purchaser to go over the property.
That is correct, Mayor. The logic we use behind that is when that fee was assessed to that property, it carried with that property. So, if that homeowner sold that house to somebody else, our assumption is that that fee carried on in the sale price of the home, or if a builder originally built and paid that fee, when they sold that home, that fee was part of the sale price of the home. Similar for the commercial applications, when the contractor pulled the permit on behalf of his customer, he carried that price over to his customer.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions here? Yes, Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, we're definitely doing the right thing here, returning this money to the people that paid it. But since we're on the Clean Water Coalition, I just wanted to ask Councilman Ross, where are we with that coalition, and where are we with it?
With your permission, Mayor? For the benefit of the mayor and the council and the community, the Clean Water Coalition is all but dissolved. It is over with and gone, other than just the name. Clark County Water Reclamation has taken over any responsibilities or liabilities that were associated with the Clean Water Coalition. So, there are some legal issues currently with the city of North Las Vegas and Clark County that are holding us back from having a unanimous four-member vote in the Clean Water Coalition to completely dissolve the coalition, but for all intents and purposes, it is over with. Thank you for asking that.
But that does not mean that we are not concerned about keeping our water clean.
No, it has nothing to do with keeping our water clean.
Thank you.
Our own staff, and it's important that you recognize too, as a mayor and council members and for the general public, we have got some terrific people that work for the city of Las Vegas in our wastewater treatment facilities, North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Clark County. They all do a great job in keeping water safe for all of southern Nevada, and I know you're a big part of that, Jorge, and it's been an honor for me to serve in that capacity on the Clean Water Coalition, to kind of safeguard that, but we don't need it anymore, so it's time to move on.
Great. Mr. Councilman Coffin?
You know, this is almost a two-year fight, and so, I'm happy it's over. We have to applaud Tony Marnell over at the M Resort, well, he did own the M Resort at the time, because he had spent about $700,000. He had put that much money into the fund. I suppose the M will get some refund here on this, or has already received some refund from the county. But I, this passed with only one legislator voting no, like, two years ago, and I'm proud to say I was the one, the only, I was 63. And I predicted that, and I didn't, 1:30 in the morning, and everybody wanted to go home from that special session, and I said, you're going to have litigation. This is not only not right and unfair, but it's illegal. And that court case took a while, but that Supreme Court decision completely changed public policy in the state of Nevada when it was finally announced in May last year, because it forced the governor to wake up and stop trying to take money from local government, and the legislators backtracked, and they had to pass, you know, tax increases, actually, just simply continuing taxes that had been passed. But the point was, this is a significant thing. It's more than just returning the money. It's all about a huge change, a sea change in public policy. So, I'm going to be real happy to be able to hand over a couple of checks in this, in my ward, because I can tell you that the people that, when they heard about it, they were upset, but when it was done, in the early morning hours, at 1:30 in the morning, when that vote was cast, they thought, up there, nobody is surely going to see this or notice it, because it's not going to raise their taxes. And it was money that had been set aside for a public purpose and was now going to be taken away to pay for expenses in Elko, Ely, Reno, everywhere but Las Vegas. So, it's nice to see this end, and I'm so glad we came to a resolution where at least a good portion of the money is going to be returned right to the people who actually paid it. Thanks for working out the solution to all of that for us.
You're welcome.
So, with that laudatory comment, would you please make a motion, Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I'd be happy to move.
Could I give a public comment?
Not at this portion, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'm sorry, do we have more public comment?
Not at this point.
Okay, then I have moved to approve.
Well, it's concerning my effort and reimbursement up on this money.
Okay. Excuse me, we're on a motion right now. There's a motion on the floor. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. We will have more public comment afterwards. Thank you.
But I wanted to comment on this item.
Well, you can comment in the public portion later. Thank you. Moving on to Item Number 52, Boards and Commissions For Possible Action, Yucca Mountain Nuclear Repository Committee, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Mayor Oscar Goodman had appointed me to the Yucca Mountain Nuclear Repository Committee, which is a city committee. I also serve on the state committee, and I just thought it, since Councilman Coffin had indicated such an interest in the nuclear waste situation, that he might want to have the city one, and then we could both share what's happening, and it would spread the information further.
Great, great. So, you are making a motion?
Well, I'm resigning, and I must, I think that you would make the motion, or, because you are the mayor, and I think you would appoint him.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I am announcing the resignation of Councilwoman Tarkanian from the City Committee On Nuclear Repository, and in that same motion to fill that position, I am appointing Councilman Coffin, and that is my motion. Please vote. Please post. Wonderful. Motion carries. Congratulations, another committee. We appreciate it. We are now on to Item 53, And Recommending Committee, Bill Eligible For Adoption At This Meeting. This is Bill Number 2011-44. And Councilman Barlow, do you wish, please, to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, Bill Number 211-44, orders to establish a parking program for qualified alternative fuel vehicles, as required by state law, and provide further related matters. provide for related matters.
Thank you very much. Mr. Arndt, please.
Thank you. For the record, Bill Arndt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This bill before you is to follow a new state law which requires that all local authorities establish a permit program providing free parking to alternative fuel vehicles. I would like to state for the record and the listening audience that alternative fuel vehicles, as defined in this new state law, is very specific. It does not include a lot of the popular gas-electric hybrids. It's similar, simply limited to completely alternative fuel vehicles, such as the electric-only cars, the Nissan Leaf, and the Chevy Volt. So, those are the kind of vehicles which comply with the, the new law. The city has established a permit application, which will be online starting January third of next year, and any questions concerning the program can be directed to our Parking and Hearings Office by calling two-two-nine-four-seven-zero-zero. We will have administrative policy for making sure that anyone who applies for getting a way, a permit to park for free in our facilities can do so, and that process will be explained both online and available on the phone as well.
Could you repeat the phone number, please?
Sure. Again, it's not live now. It will be live January third. The phone number is two-two-nine-four-seven-zero-zero, and that is our Parking and Hearings Office.
And those people that own those vehicles not only will be able to park in the public air, facilities of the city, but also with the metered parking because of their permit?
I, I believe that's, I believe it's, that's correct. They still have to follow the, the parking rules, so cars can't park in a fire zone or a red zone, that sort of thing, but it does allow for free parking.
And this is a state edict, basically?
It's a state law, so the county and all the other local jurisdictions throughout the state are doing so.
Great. So, how wonderful for Leaf and Volt, and Councilman Coffin, who's now going to tell you how lucky he is, with his silent creeping car.
Creeping, not creepy. Thank you, Your Honor. Well, but if there is a two-hour limit or a one-hour limit in a space, a person still has to obey that, or they're going to get cited.
Correct.
I think that's important, right?
Correct. We can still enforce our parking rules, so if there's, if the space has a limitation, such as the meters, to provide turnover for our customers, they have to follow those rules as well.
Ma'am, I don't have to declare a conflict since I'm already exempt from parking in the city.
It's your age that is exempting you, not your vehicle.
My car is white in addition to my hair. I think that important, though, that, this is kind of interesting, because it's a feel-good bill by the state, which is coming at the expense of the local governments. So, it's one of those things that kind of just comes along and goes along, so I'm happy to accept that. And don't pick on my car, because I am not financing Arab governments, I want you to know.
Okay. I just want to know that you are going to pay a permit fee.
Oh.
I hope it's somewhat equitable, so you get a little money coming in.
There's a heavy fee that we're going to be establishing of ten dollars annually.
Oh, my goodness, that. Can you afford that on your salary, Councilman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to make a motion, please?
Yes, but prior to the motion, Mayor, I would like to make a comment as relates to something that I brought forward in the recommending committee meeting, and that was, over time, over a period of time, as we transition off of gasoline and into the alternative fuel, the question that I brought forward was the parking rates, the money that we receive currently through our parking enforcement. Those revenues will start to decline as more cars come online that qualify for this specific program, so I just wanted to put that out there for us to start to consider soon enough what the alternative would be as those revenues declined, how we're going to replace those revenues in possible other areas in order to remain whole versus having to go into a deficit. But I understand that there will be many years prior to that taking place, but at least the conversation should, should begin. So, if no one else has any further questions, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. How exciting. Are you giving everybody a free ride?
Your Honor, I'll be happy to give you a ride any day.
Thank you.
You're dateable, no question. Your Honor, I just wanted to say one thing about this problem. It's a heck of a problem that Councilman Barlow mentions. There is a solution. It's already been devised, and there is, I mean, all the formulas are there. The, what we have to do is just get the guts in the level, at the state level now, to tax vehicles on a weight and distance formula instead of on the gas tax. I mean, it's there, but the trucking industry has fought this hardest of all, and they continue to pour money into campaigns against this, because they are not paying their fair share of, of expense to maintain the highways. And they feel that this is a definite, this will cause them to spend a lot of money, but of course, that's, that's their right to fight, and they spend millions lobbying it in campaign contributions. Nevertheless, it's something to consider. Everybody, everybody watching this program afterward ought to know that the trucking industry is going to be at the heart of the fight against fairness and equity in paying for your roads.
Well, and too, I know we have a huge amount of rental cars in this community from the tourism, and at some point, the state going to look at mandating the fuel-efficient electric cars or wherever that's going to go, and that, again, as Councilman Barlow has brought up, actually impacts the city, coffers, and the county, and the state.
Yeah, my Volt is not a light car. It's got two motors plus a four-hundred-pound battery. It's going to do just as much damage to the, to the road as any other car.
And four of your cousins underneath running, carrying you. Thank you, Councilman. Okay. Item number fifty-four has been abayed from Recommending Committee to February first, and Ms. Fretwell, are we closed session?
Yes, briefly.
Briefly. Okay. So, at this point, it's five minutes of eleven. When will we reconvene? We will reconvene at one o'clock, and so the morning session is here and closed. Thank you very much. Before we get started with the rest of the afternoon session, I understand that we have some very special guests joining us, and I want to welcome a local Boy Scout troop that's joining us today as they work towards their citizenship and community merit badges. As I call your names, I'd like you to ask you that the scouts stand, and we will give them all a round of applause. First, we have Jacob Barnowski. If you would stand up, please, a star rank who attends for Tita Middle School. We also have Jake Lee, who is a scout and attends Orr Middle School. Then we have Stephen Hilsted, a life rank who attends K.O. Knutson Middle School. And finally, we have Isaac Chavez, also a life rank, who attends Greenspun Middle School. We are very proud of you all. Can we do the same sign of those, of these things?
Sure.
Okay. Aside from giving them a round of applause, we are going to try to get four of our briefing schedules for today, which we will ask all the city council to sign. If someone can get us four, please. Pardon? We're going to get them. Pardon? And we will get these back to you. Just if you'll sit for a few moments, we'll sign them. And again, I would like another round of, of applause for these wonderful young people. Thank you all for being here today. And then, two very special, since I was just upstairs, I have, oh my goodness, ugh, made a terrible mistake. We'll do that another time. I had, thought I had something with me, which I don't. But anyway, keep up the good work, and I'm so glad you're all from different schools, because that shows what a wonderful community we have together in you wonderful young men. So, we're going to sign these, we'll get them back to you. So, now we will open the rest of the afternoon agenda, and we are starting with item, agenda item number fifty-six. And this is public hearing for possible action. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem Anthony?
We have no items, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So, there is nothing to vote on. Moving on to item number fifty-seven. Did those agenda? They are. They're coming along, boys, so we'll get them very soon. This is public hearing for possible action to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees totaling nineteen hundred, eighteen dollars, fifty-five cents, and civil penalties in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars recorded against the property located at nineteen twenty-five Franklin Avenue. The property owner is the Bank of New York Mellon T R S. This is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin's Ward. This is a public hearing which I now declare open. Is the property owner present? Mr. Bowes? We do have property owner or representation. Please come forward, and Mr. Bowes, we'll let you go first if we could.
Mayor, members of the city council, for the record, Michael Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager. The main cross streets to this property are Charleston and Eastern. This case was opened in January eleventh of this year. We noted substantial conditions on the property. A notice and order was issued on January twenty-seventh of this year to the property owner at that time, a gentleman named Jeremy Shane. The notice and order was not complied with, so the city commenced abatement action to clear the substantial conditions. The abatement action consisted of removal of refuge, waste, high grass, weeds, the application of herbicide, and boarding all windows and doors. We closed the cage, the case on March thirty-first of this year, and the city council assessed fines and civil penalties at its June ninth meeting. On July twenty-eighth, after the council action, the property came into the ownership of the Bank of American, Bank of New York Mellon, excuse me. So, the out-of-pocket expenses for the abatement costs incurred by the city is one thousand, nine hundred, eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents, and the council imposed civil penalties in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty for a total amount of fines and abatement of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred, sixty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. The property was valued on Zillow at fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars as of December fifteenth.
And I'm sorry if you mentioned them. What are the major cross streets on this house?
I'm sorry, Mayor. The major cross streets are Charleston and Eastern.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, my name is Todd Beaton, and I'm with Prudential Americana Group Real Estate. We represent Bank of America, who's now the owner of the property. We took, the, Bank of America took possession through foreclosure sale, I believe, in June of two thousand and eleven, which is about sixty days after the, the case was closed. We noticed on the, the ledger that there was a civil penalty, civil penalty of twenty-five thousand dollars, a fine of five hundred dollars per day from the time the case was open on January eleventh until it was closed on the thirty-first. We're asking for a waiver and/or a reduction in the civil penalty, penalty and, and the fines accrued, being that they took, they, they took place when it was owned by the previous owner, Jeremy Shane, and before Bank of America took possession of the property.
Any comments, questions from our council people? This is public hearing, and you are welcome to make comment if you wish.
My name is Man Hala, I'm one-two-three, Sir David. I'm sorry, no mercy for the bank, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Todd Farley, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Bank Mellon of New York is a bank that is so hoi polloi that they charge the depositor a fee for parking their money in their accounts. That's what we're dealing with there. They pay, they pay no interest. They charge the depositor money.
What I really want to see, Mayor and Council, I want to see some perp walks. I want to see these bankers marched off to jail. Period.
In this matter, do you, is there someone that is interested in buying this property at this point?
Yes, Mayor. The property is actually under contract due to close. I don't have a, a close date with me, but it went, the property was sent to auction in which it was purchased recently, and in order to convey clear title to the new buyer, obviously, we have to come to some resolution as to the, the outstanding fines and liens.
Okay. Councilman Coffin, this is in your ward. Do we have some comments here?
Your Honor, I think that, I don't think any special treatment is needed in this. I would propose that we, to follow our standard procedure in things like this, those civil penalties help cover costs that the actually hard costs don't always cover, time spent on a case. Therefore, I will move that we will charge you ten percent of the fees, in essence, waiving ninety percent of the civil for a total cost, including the hard costs of nineteen hundred and eighteen dollars, to make a total cost, as I see it, of four thousand, seven hundred, five dollars and fifty cents. And I think you probably could handle that one.
Yeah, we can, we can take care of that. Will I receive some form of statement saying that the, the additional above and beyond costs are actually being waived, so we'll have a, a new invoice that we can recur?
Yes, Todd, you will. Thank you very much. Your Honor, I move.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much on this item. Do we have to sign agenda items, please? And in addition to these wonderful agenda, I have a good luck, good health chip for each one of you. These are thousand-dollar chips. But your health is more important, and you cannot cash them. My husband had hundred-dollar chips, so being the female side, I had to be better. So, I just want you to know, but they are for good luck and good health. We're very proud of you, and if I may, city clerk, if you would make sure each one of our wonderful scout students receive one of these. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt on this. We are now item on two, fifty-eight? Number fifty-eight, public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at four-three-one-two Amethyst Avenue for fees in the amount of three thousand, two hundred, seventeen dollars, fifty cents, general fund, and assess a maximum of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in daily civil penalties. Property owner, trustee, Clark County Treasurer, Care of Jane Senor. This is in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the property owner or representative present? Mr. Bowes?
Mayor, members of the council, Michael Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager. The major cross streets to this property are Craig and Rainbow. This case was opened on April twelfth of this year. A notice and order was issued on May twelfth. There was no compliance with the notice and order, and the city had to take action to abate substantial conditions. We closed the case on November eighth. The abatement action that we had to take was removal of refuge, waste, high weeds from all yards, and removal of an unpermitted fire damaged structure. What happened in the middle of this case was that we, we learned that the property owner died, and the property owner's family now has possession of the property and has indicated that they have no desire to incur costs in maintaining the property. Therefore, we're recommending the assessment of our hard costs of three thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents, the assessment of civil penalties and fines in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for a total cost of, hard costs and civil fines of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred, seventeen dollars and fifty cents. The property was valued by Zillow at forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars as of November twenty-third.
Is the property for sale?
No, ma'am.
It's just sitting there, or has been repossessed?
My understanding is the property is, is sitting there, has not been repossessed, it's not in foreclosure. The property owner died, and his heirs now have the property.
Please, Councilman Wilson?
With your permission, Councilman Ross, is there a mortgage on the property? Okay, that's the point, is there's no lien holder. So, the people that own the house, the heirs of the decedent are just going to sit on it, wait and see what happens, maybe put it on the market. Are they required to maintain the property? Are they required to maintain the property?
Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up.
Vicki Ozuna, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. The property owners, well, she's died, but the, her heirs are going through probate, but none of them have an interest in the property because there is a previous lien that we have on this property. We've done a previous abatement. Property is not worth anything to them. So I believe they're just gonna let it go up for tax sale. That's why Clark County Treasurers is on the ownership. So they're just gonna let it go up for auction.
Thank you. Any comments here?
Well, the lady just stated that the county gonna let it go up for auction, so I guess y'all getting something out of it. But when it, when it goes to the county for auction, then that's the last step, right? Ross, sorry about that, but that's the truth. Once it go to, for the county for auction, well, you'll just have to give whatever they let you have. Sorry about that.
Next, please.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Can you, is there any, does anybody have any idea of how long it takes before it goes to auction? What my question is, who, how, how is the property, who's gonna pay for maintaining the property until it gets auctioned off? That's, that's the thing.
It sounds like the city is gonna maintain it and, and assess fines, and then those fines will come off the sale price.
What if the sale price doesn't bring, doesn't recover the, the cost?
Pull them out of the assessed.
Councilman Coffin just made that thing, you know, that if it doesn't, if it doesn't recover the costs, then we're gonna have to start getting some more percentage on, on these, on these other ones.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's I understand that the property will be auctioned in April.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. And to you, Mayor. What happens then if we hammer this property again with a fat lien, and it goes to auction? Is, are those liens, the previous lien we've already put on it, and this lien that we wanna put on it today, is that gonna be incorporated into that auction price, or are we gonna see the county standing here before us asking for us to lessen those, those fees? And I'm, I'm kinda bummed out here because I know this neighborhood well. This is Jade Park. It's Craig and Rancho. It's an older part of the Northwest, and a lot of people take a great deal of pride and dignity in their homes in this, in this location. So it kinda bothers me that the family has no interest. I mean, I would, our, our foreclosure ordinance, Mayor and council members, was to go after banks and hold them accountable, or lenders, if you will. Here's a home that's actually owned by the family, and that's not in bankruptcy, that they have no interest or desire to maintain. How do we, as a city, stick a seventy-eight thousand dollar penalty on this property?
Unfortunately, did you want, I was gonna say, just unfortunately, this is gonna be one of those things where it just kind of compounds the problem, because if you put another seventy-eight thousand on it, the property may be only worth twenty, and it may not sell at the auction. Because anyone who does a due diligence before the auction will know what the lien amount is on, on the property. So they may, it may not go for sale at the auction.
Yeah, and, and I, thank you, Brian, for that. And Mayor, if I may continue, I, I'm just challenged because this is a family property there. It sounds like they're in probate, it's unfortunate someone passed away. I'd like to see someone pick this property up and make it a home, so we don't have to worry about maintaining it. We don't have to continue to send code enforcement out there to clean up the rubbish and clean up the grass.
When is pro, do we have any clue as to when probate is closed?
The family members did not give us any indication when the probate is gonna close. There's one of the members who, well, she would like to maintain it. She lives in California, and I guess the rest of the family members live elsewhere, and none of them have any desire to come and deal with the property. They, they just really wanna act like it doesn't exist, unfortunately.
How about our court system here that hears the probate? Which, where is it assigned?
There, probate takes quite a while. I mean, even the smallest states could take up to a year or more to actually resolve, depending on how, if the heirs can be located, if certain other things take place. It may take more than a year for probate to, to go through. So that's why it's always wide of trust.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Scott Adams, Chief of Redevelopment Officer. I may need the attorneys, may need the attorneys to confirm this, but the fact there's not a, any type of mortgage lien on the property, I think it, when it goes up for tax sale, then it becomes a matter of the order of priority of government liens.
Correct.
I think in this case, and correct me if I'm wrong, the tax lien would get satisfied first, and then other liens thereafter.
That's correct.
There may be an opportunity, and I'll, I'll confirm this, for us as a city to start picking these, that type of property up out of the tax sale after the tax lien's been satisfied at some reasonable cost. Since we're the primary lien holder, we may be able to have some priority opportunity to, to take the property back, for example, rehab, and then put it back on, on the market after we've done some settlement of the liens.
And do we continue just, I mean, obviously, for the neighborhood, I'm sure Councilman Ross would want it to be kept up, as would the neighbors. So we would continue with hard costs? Day-to-day liens is well beyond the seventy-eight thousand on a house that's worth forty-three?
I think at that point going forward, it then becomes a matter of our out-of-pocket cost to maintain the property.
We may want to think about that, just because I wouldn't want someone to think that we're piling on liens in order to get the property at a lower price than we would have had to pay normally at fair market value. So we'd have to, we, let's research that, that, that idea a little bit more.
Shall we then obey this particular item, or no?
I'm not sure. I think Councilman Ross was gonna ask about the prior liens.
I was just gonna ask one question, and that is, I'd like to know what other cities are doing in these situations. Is it prudent to start acquiring properties? Does the city want to be the property owner of ten, twenty, fifty, one hundred houses? What are other cities doing in these circumstances? I think that's what we need to know. We don't need to, we don't need to know that today. But, I mean, this is, we don't get this a lot, and we'll probably get it more and more.
If I, if I could chime in again, I think if we want to do anything, we would at least want to lean it at the prior to tax sale for our actual out-of-pocket hard costs, because we don't know whether it'll sell or not. If it sells, and we haven't leaned it for at least our hard costs, and we don't have any opportunity to recover this.
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you. That sounds very reasonable.
If I may, Mayor. What was the previous lien? Vicki, do you recall, or you're trying to find that out now because you knew I was gonna ask?
I know.
If you could find that out for us, I'd appreciate it. How quickly can you find that out?
Oh, I've got, you mean, the hard costs right now are third?
No, no, the previous lien, because we've gone out, we've gone out and abated this property before. Now, Vicki, if you'd come back to the microphone, please. You mentioned that, well, let me ask some fundamental questions. Who did we contact when we started the abatement process on this property? I'm looking back to April, and sewer address shows forty-two seventy-five North Rancho Drive, Suite one-twenty. Who got contacted? Were family members contacted about us going out there cleaning up this mess?
When we issued the notice and order, we posted it on site. Apparently, the property owners must probably be having the mail forwarded to them, so they received a copy of the notice and order. Then they contacted the officer who was handling the case.
The family did contact the officer. And?
And that's part of the reason why this case took so long. They were going to try and clean up the property and resolve the issues, and they couldn't get time enough to come out, so we were giving them extensions and going back and forth. So, and that's when, I guess, the person in charge of the, executing the will, decided that she just had enough because she couldn't get the rest of her family members to participate, and she just said, listen, do what you gotta do.
Do you have her information? Have you been making contact with her, as executive?
I personally haven't. The, the officer did, and when she said that she was done in trying to deal with the case, we just went ahead and moved forward. We have not made any contact with them since.
Well, depending on the motion, and whether it gets approved or not, I would like to direct you, I want to help this family out. And if they want to hang on to this property, maybe put another family in there, rent it as a rental property, or put it up on the market and sell it, and not go through that county process, I'd prefer they do that, because I'd like to see a family in this home.
Just to let you know, I believe the inside of the trailer has been damaged by fire. That may be one of the reasons why they don't wanna, it, it's not so damaged that we could actually tear it down, but that may be one of the reasons why they're not willing to do anything.
Excuse me. You mentioned just now the word "trailer"?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a mobile home.
It's a pre, pre manufactured home.
Manufactured.
So its fire life is like three minutes anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So Councilman Ross?
I think, Mayor, I appreciate the council's input in this, and you can, we can all see this is an unusual case. I really want to try to help this family out. So Vicki, I'd like you to have some contact with them, and we're trying to do the best thing we can for them and for that neighborhood. I'm gonna make a motion that we do lien for.
Did you want to know the previous amount? Apparently, this was a case where the son had come back before the council, and you guys were very generous in giving more time so that he could maybe go to probate. Okay. But you guys only approved a lien for the hard costs of three thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. So there's no outstanding civil penalties on this property at this time.
Just the hard costs from the first abatement. And I recall this case.
Correct.
And so it could be sellable, and I want to make it sellable. So I'm gonna move that we do lien this property for actual hard costs incurred by the city of Las Vegas in the amount of thirty-two hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, sir.
And we try to, we hope, we hope we don't see this on our radar again. And we'll go ahead and waive the civil penalties so we can try to get this property sold, the family in it, and do what's right for that neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Ozuna, one other question. Your comment just now about that amount that was assessed was three thousand four hundred and some dollars. This is three thousand two hundred and seventeen. So has something been paid toward this, or is this in addition to that?
This was in a, a previous abatement. We've done two abatements on this property now.
Okay.
Okay.
So that will take it up to like seven thousand when you put them together.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate that. Items fifty-nine through sixty-six on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by planning department. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items fifty-nine through sixty-six, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much, Councilman Anthony. There's a motion. Please vote. If you can vote. Here we are. Okay. Did everyone has, by eye, and raise your hand, please, if you vote. Oh, here it is. Okay.
Sorry. It just took a while to catch up.
Okay, it's the afternoon. It's holiday time. It's a little, that was a little short.
Yes, put me in affirmative. I, it went through the first time, but it didn't go through the second time.
It didn't catch up yet.
Okay.
Okay, item sixty-seven. E O T four-two-four-two-nine, advance item, extension of time, nonconforming use, public hearing. Applicant owner, Stradivagus LLC, for possible action on a request for an extension of time. The nonconforming billiard parlor pool hall with restricted gaming and beer wine cooler on sale at twenty-four eleven East Bonanza Road. This is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Applicant present?
Yes.
Please come forward. State your name.
Jeffrey Mayhew for Stradivagus LLC.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, this is a simple extension. I think that, I think staff has a recommendation, though, that technically we have to add another month to the extension.
Yes, that's correct, if I might, Madam Mayor. There is a correction to the actual date. The license was formally marked out of date on July the fourteenth instead of June the thirteenth, as indicated in our condition of approval. So I would just request that we modify condition number one to state that the extension of time shall expire on July fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, unless another extension of time is approved by city council. So just a correction to the date to July fourteenth.
Okay. July fourteenth. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to be heard on this matter?
My name is Ann Harley, one, two, three, Sir David. All I say is a business and good luck, sir.
Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll, I'll move for granting the advance, the extension of time on this to June thirteenth, twelve, two thousand and twelve, based upon the comments from staff indicating that that has to be corrected.
I thought it was July. Mr. Flynn?
I'm sorry, to July fourteenth.
Thank you. The steel day.
Yeah.
That steel day.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number sixty-eight, S D R four-three-zero-one-two, abeyance item, site development plan review, public hearing. Applicant Nissan Corollie?
Corogli.
Corogli.
Yes.
Owner, Fremont Place LLC, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a temporary parking lot with waivers of the downtown centennial plan, streetscape standards, some point six-two acres at two-oh-eight North Las Vegas Boulevard. This is in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Planning commission and staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing which I declare open, and again, I'm sorry, would you state your full name and?
Nissan Corogli, owner of Fremont Place LLC.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to turn over this time to Flynn to give us a backdrop on the conversation with, I believe it was Ray that came in to speak with Flynn and Edo?
Correct.
I'm not sure if you were there.
Yes, sir.
Nissan, you were there as well?
Yes.
Okay. And give a backdrop, and then the conditions that were agreed upon.
Certainly. The plan originally submitted to us did not conform with the downtown centennial plan requirements for a temporary parking lot, in that the landscaping had been provided at the interior of the lot and not at the perimeter as required by the code. As the councilman has indicated, we did have a meeting with the applicant and with a member of his staff. We have had the applicant go back to the drawing board. They have provided a new plan to us that does show that they'll be providing twenty-five foot tall Mexican fan palms along Las Vegas Boulevard behind the sidewalk, and then be, they'll be providing some type of shade tree along Ogden, again, immediately behind the sidewalk. I have a revised plan that was given to our office on Thursday afternoon. I've reviewed that, and consequently, this is much better than what they originally provided to us. It still requires waivers of the downtown centennial plan. However, it does bring trees to the perimeter of the lot, provides for shade along our city sidewalks, and we think will help to beautify that temporary lot. I would need to make a modification to one of the conditions of approval. That would be condition number four, referencing the plan submitted to us, and I would just amend it as such, that all development shall be in conformance with the combined site and landscape plan, date stamped December fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, except as amended by conditions herein. And then I will put the amended site plan on the record with the city clerk.
And therefore recommend approval? Yes. Okay. This is public hearing. Please step forward. State your name.
Ann Harley said the same thing. This is a business, so, hey, good luck, and he said they can make a good change. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Councilman Barlow, thank you very much for getting the trees in.
Anyone else wishing to be heard this time? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, there is. I want to thank the Coroglies so very much for bringing this item forward. I would rather see your development coming forward versus what is currently there today, specifically as it face Las Vegas Boulevard. And also, I agree with Mr. Farlow that there needs to be some level of landscaping at this site due to the beautification that we've brought in down the corridor of Las Vegas Boulevard. And so for that, we want to make sure that we continue to beautify our major thoroughfares in order to continue to create a beautiful city. And landscaping most definitely adds an additional attraction to any city that is, you know, that is to be beautified. So with that, if you agree to the conditions that have been imposed by our planning department, state on the record your approval or disapproval of what's been stated here today.
We agree with the changes, with the approval.
Okay. So with that, I will move to follow staff's conditions, staff's approval, subject to all conditions in this matter. And thank you, Nissan, for your assistance.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And good luck to you.
Thank you for your help. And happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Don't go away yet because we haven't voted.
I'll be here.
There is a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Now you can go. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
On that issue, I'd like to thank staff for going along with Mexican fan palms on these kinds of things because they're a lot less expensive than the deglaineur that they used to require. You get the same effect, same height, for about one-third the price. And so it's easier for people to conform to that look that we want for the Boulevard.
Thank you.
So thanks for putting that in there, fellows, instead of the other one.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to item number 69, EOT 43770, extension of time, nonconforming use, public hearing, applicant owner, Spokes LLC, for possible action on a request for an extension of time for a nonconforming cavern located 3540 West Sahara. This is in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open. An applicant or representative, please state your name.
Mayor, members of the council, John O'Reilly of the O'Reilly Law Group appearing on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item?
My name is Lynn Harley. It's another business, and hey, business is business. And long as people got a business, you know, and they trying to thrive, whatever. Hey, I'm in favor of that because that create jobs. Good luck, sir.
Thank you. Just by background...
Water the trees.
This years ago, it used to be the Viva Zapata location, most recently the bounty hunter location. The landlord is obviously the applicant who's owned the center for a long time and is, as we know, it's the whole neighborhood and the center is in a state of transition. So hopefully you'll follow the recommendations of staff.
Ate at Viva Zapata many, many a time. Very good food.
It's a long time ago.
Yes, it is.
It only seems like yesterday.
And I'm so young, and so are you. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I would always say that, too. I'd like to move quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays, doll.
Nice to see you. I know I'll see you meeting there. Happy holidays. Item number 70, I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings and nuisance litter abatements. Thank you. And citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name, please, for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? I have a card from Tome Holdip here. Okay, I will get to you all in a moment, but since you so kindly did this, please do come forward and state your name. You do not have to give your address. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is, as the mayor said, my name is Tome Holdip, North Las Vegas, Nevada, 89030. I've been here several times before during the tenured of your husband, and I wanted to read you guys what I have here and what this is pertaining to. These incidents were proved during incarceration and before that the North Las Vegas Police Department have and continue to use U.S. citizens, willing and unwilling, by strategic planning and profiling, profiling to know all addresses, whereabouts, relatives, employment, accomplishments, failures, and criminal backgrounds, by using unlawful scenarios, sleekly seeming lawful, to subject individuals to unlawful jurisdiction by using governmental powers, in total violation of the U.S. Bill of Rights and constitutional rights specifically pertaining to me, Tome Lawrence Holdip. The aforementioned are only used as examples and events happen or happens that have been expressed by conversation, TV news, newspaper, internet, and other press access. They may or may not be recorded. These incidents, you know, go through a line of things that have happened from start to finish from two years that I have dealings with the North Las Vegas Police Department. And with these...
So I might mention that is a North Las Vegas issue rather than a city council here.
Yes, ma'am. But as this is, as this states, this shows with the chart of the board of how you guys organize your entire board, meaning that the electrical is at the top, city council is at the top, and then the municipals of court judges are all on the same board. So my whole point in saying that is, previous cases that have happened up until the point of me being incarcerated have previously put me in this situation, meaning, and case in point, meaning that I went on to San Diego before my brother had his scenario. My brother was trailed by the North Las Vegas Police Department during a kidnapping. And I expressed this whole idea many times to this board, to the city, to county, and to North Las Vegas. I've tried to get lawyers and many other people to help me with this scenario. So you ask the same questions as, why are you saying this to me? Well, this board shows that this doesn't change. The city council is over the city attorneys, the city managers, and everybody under that jurisdiction. The police fall right under that jurisdiction, as you see. And the judges, like I said, are on the same board.
Unfortunately, Mr. Holdip, you're out of town, but I might suggest you go to legal aid and see if they can give you some advice.
I went to legal board, and it was pro bono work, and they pushed me on and whatnot and didn't help me at all.
Well, I think that's where you need to be. I don't believe this council's in a position to help you, but I think that's where you need to go back, unless someone has some other comment?
Mayor, I would have to agree. We have no authority over the North Las Vegas Police Department.
Right.
How they're organized, how they're managed, we have really no authority, so we can't do anything to help there.
Mrs. Lois Tarkanian, excuse me, Councilwoman, I would like to address that. Well, Officer Ed Weathers and James Allen is tied to the mayor and the previous mayor. And he is one of the people who was booking me during my incarceration. Who is tied to my family. So it's all woven into one scene.
Well, the mayor would know about her, for your cousin's tied in.
If I might suggest, perhaps what would happen, I'm going to ask one of our, if you will step down and step aside, that one of our legal staff would just go have a chat and see if you can give some advice, please. And I wish you a happy holiday, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next time, we hope you'll take your hat off.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. It's all right. I wasn't going to do that in front of everything. Please, if you would, then. Happy holidays.
Is there a way, lastly, and let you guys get into your holiday, is there a way, because I wasn't, for two years, I tried to schedule a meeting with your husband, and he just continued to push me off. Is there a way that on to this time and going into the new year that me and you can sit down?
I think it depends on the issues. I mean, I'd be happy to help or try to help you, but I think your issues first and foremost are with North Las Vegas. And I really would highly recommend that you speak with our legal counsel, and then they'll advise me as to, you know, if there's anything they see I could help you with.
Okay.
So I wish you a happy holiday.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? And please come forward, state your name.
Hello, I'm Rasan Joshua Collins, a public minister for the Lord Jesus Christ. And just leave some contact information, those of you who have heard me before. You can reach me through my friend Teddy at area code 702-306-1433. Leave a message. That's 702-306-1433. And I just want to leave a message for those that haven't heard it. Obey Jesus, not Satan. Sexual sin and greed leads to hell. Be sober, don't curse, smoke, gamble, or lie. Help the homeless. Jesus was homeless, too. Fight corporate greed and be a nonconsumer. Boycott those who abuse others in our world. I was arrested for preaching. Many Las Vegas police and judges and officials are guilty of treason for failing to uphold good morals and public decency laws as prescribed by Internet's Chapter 201 and Las Vegas Municipal Code, Chapter 10. And many, just so you know, many locals and tourists are actually supportive of this message and are helping me to share it. I encourage others, too, as well. And I'm speaking to a lot of the homeless, of course, because I used to be a math instructor and I taught everything, child, and preaching for the Lord. I'm seeing that they're crying out for a lot of help. And those that want to help, these are some things that they need, and you can contact me at that number, leave a message. But the one thing they need is a place to put their belongings, because a lot of times the police will take them and rouse wherever they're camped at, where their belongings are, and throw walkers away and all kinds of things. So I'm seeing all kinds of awful situations there. Also, a safe place to sleep, where they won't be continually, you know, pushed around by cops, so that, you know, they don't have to sleep under bridges and that kind of thing. And also, I'm asking, you know, for help, hopefully, you, Mayor, with the, into the bigotry that are, because a lot of times against the poor, you know, not all of them are the same, they're not all, you know, druggies and that kind of thing. And unfortunately, I think the last mayor kind of left a negative, I guess you could say, personification of all the homeless. And that needs to stop, of course, you know, because they're not all the same. And number four, one homeless individual spoke to me about dental and medical help. A lot of homeless people aren't able to get that, you know, so if anyone can help with those types of things, that would be great. And again, the number 306-1433, that's local, that's my friend Teddy. And I'm, of course, I'm preaching on Fremont Street all the time, so, you know, for help, ideas or questions you have, you can call that number. And just remember Isaiah 58 verse 7 also. It tells us to invite the poor into our homes and don't hide yourself from your own flesh, is what it's saying. So loving neighbor yourself is basically what it's saying. I encourage people to do that over this season and, you know, all the time, you know. I've learned a lot by being homeless myself, and, you know, I just encourage people not to look down on those people because God is a defender of the poor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays, happy new year to you. Anyone else be heard? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, before I throw myself out. I got to get, the year's coming to an end, and I do have to get one thing straight. There's an old saying, if you don't toot your own horn, you don't get no credit for it. You're the mayor-elect, and your husband made a statement after the election was over that your campaign manager had come up with the idea for you to run for mayor. That ain't true. Two and a half years ago, I sent your husband out in the courtyard and whatever, told, you see, the governor of Alabama, named George Wallace, he ran two terms on a term limit in Alabama, and his wife ran and became the governor. Then he ran for the president, that independent thing in 16. Tell it like it is. Two and a half years ago, I told your husband to let you run because he was heartbroken. I have to stand up for what you do me. Because of this attitude, I had to tell the truth, man. You sitting there up there because of me, he sit up there because of me, Jan Jones sit up there because of me, that Ward 5 and 6 down sit up because, hey, I have toot my own horn every now and then. I'm sick of that. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody.
Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. Happy Hanukkah. How could I forget mine?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. For the past several years, I've been saying outrageous things about the bankers. And starting the new year, I want to get rid of all this stuff I've carried around. I've got 12 and a half pounds of stuff, because of the outrageous things I've said about bankers, you've got to be able to back it up in case anybody challenges. I was challenged three times, and by the time the people that challenged me read this stuff, they found out it was just the tip of the iceberg. So that was it. And I don't want to carry this around anymore. I want to clean this thing out and start with a clean slate. Now, George Knapp and Allison McCarthy had a nice deal on Channel 8 News, exposure on the mortgage crisis, and you're aware of it now, so now I can get rid of that. The other thing is, the holidays metro dreads, because all the families get together and start bringing up old slights and animosities and start fighting. And I say, let's start, let's end the year right. Let's channel all of our anger towards family members and put it on the banks where it belongs. Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday.
Happy holidays, Happy New Year. Anyone else wishing to be heard with joy and glee? Okay, moving on, hearing none. We will move on to item 72, councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? We will start with Councilman Barlow this time because he has been on a flight for 22 hours.
Yes, Mayor, and I am very tired. I appreciate it. I do want to announce that on January 5th, I will be hosting a neighborhood meeting at the Doolittle Community Center to discuss a new grocery store that is looking to come on the corner of Lake Meade and Martin Luther King Dollar General. And so we're asking the community to come out at 5:30 on January 5th, Doolittle Community Center, to share in any concerns or comments that they may have in regards to this new development in the ward. My goal is to have all of the vacant lots in the community developed as a part of my vision and mission as the representative of Ward 5. And having Dollar General come in, I believe, will be something of a benefit to the community. But of course, I want to make sure that we have an open governmental process for the community to share their thoughts as well. So please come out, 5:30, January 5th, Doolittle Community Center. In addition to that, I, along with the City of Las Vegas, will be hosting the MLK Dream Fest, which will be taking place at 2:00 PM immediately following the MLK Parade on January 16th. And the MLK Dream Fest will take place in the parking lot of the Edmund Town Center, starting at 2:00 PM sharp and concluding at 6:00 PM. We are looking for food vendors, a variety of vendors, as well as those who may have vehicles and motorcycles, show vehicles, car, for a car show, and motorcycles that they would like to put on display as well for competition on that day as well. So this is an event for the entire community to enjoy. We'll have jumpers for the kids, face painting, food. It'll be a nice carnival festival-type program taking place. Also, in addition to that, feel free to go on to my website at lasvegassnevada.gov/MLKDreamFest for more information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Just wanted to announce that this week, we've concentrated on meals for senior citizens at the senior centers that are in our district. We had Clark Towers and Stella Fleming on Monday, and I'm going to leave right after I finish saying this, to go to the dinner we're providing at Sartini Plaza today, and then later this week, we'll have James Down Towers. And I want to thank all of the businesses, everybody who has helped us put these on, because we've really had a tremendous help from the community. Also want to say happy holidays to everybody. Hope they're happy, hope they're spiritual, and we're going to come back in the new year revitalized, right?
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and Happy New Year to you and your family, and thank you for all the good work you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And say hello to all the seniors from all of the city council.
I will do that.
Please. Thank you. They also were young like us once.
Yes, they were. They were.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. I, too, would like to wish everybody in Las Vegas and all of Southern Nevada a very safe and happy holiday season. This has been an interesting year, to say the least. In both my personal life and my professional life, there's been a lot of great things, and life has its ups and downs, but I always have a positive attitude. I feel very fortunate that I live here in Las Vegas. I feel very fortunate that I get to work with great people, people of great integrity and great intelligence, and I enjoy working with all of you. So happy holidays to everybody and be safe, and I look forward to more to come.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me? No missing child?
No missing child.
Mr. Farlow asked about a missing child. Mr. Farlow asked about a missing child. We did have a missing child ready to talk about, and they found her this morning. That's the truth. So-
That is the best news.
There are other children out there that are missing, but I wasn't ready to talk about anybody else other than the one that was found. Thank you, though, for asking.
That's great. Thank you. Mayor Brotem Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah and a Great New Year. And thank you very much.
And Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It is not too late to get your YouTube video in. And the topic is why I love Centennial Hills. The winners get a family four-pack to the Santa Fe movie theaters and a family four-pack to dinner to Leticia's Cosina, the best Mexican food in town. Details are on lasvegassnevada.gov. Get your videos in quick.
Thank you. And last, but surely not least, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ward Three had a very successful Christmas party last Saturday. I'd like to thank our staff who attended and helped. And we even had attendees from Henderson who were looking for a better city to celebrate Christmas. And eclectic bunch. But I, really, we had a good time. And I especially want to thank staffers, and I hope I don't leave anybody out here, but Esther Carter and Christie Garnett, dancers extraordinaire and leaders, getting people out on the floor, setting a fine example, including doing the chicken dance in public. Rob Levrant and Susan Fanoukhan. Susan is my administrative assistant and does an excellent job. She and her husband Jeff were there. Elias and the staff of the East Las Vegas Community Center really did us proud. They truly do put on a fine performance. And in fact, just one hour after our event was finished, another one was starting. And they were moving stuff out and bringing it in again. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Grinch who came. The Grinch is a person on Councilman Anthony's staff, who will be named, being Anthony Roggerio, who came in character as the Grinch and truly was the hit of the party. So, thank you, one and all. And a special note to everyone out there who sees this, not only today, but, but through the holiday, and that is that Christmas is a special time for everyone, not a good time for everyone, though. And we have to be mindful of the stress that, that happens around the holidays. And so let's be extra careful with people, whether you're driving a car or whether you're walking on a sidewalk. Somebody's thinking about something that's bothering them. And let's give them a little extra consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And for closing, I just really want to thank the city staff, Betsy, everyone that is part of that, meaning everybody that's here, every city council and every single day, working so hard to show the leadership that this city has come to enjoy over the past years. It comes because we have outstanding people in every department, our city clerk's office, our marshals, our, our court judges, everybody that worked so hard to make this all happen. And of course, my colleagues up here. It really has been remarkable for me, six months, but I know we're all part of the past. And there's nothing but greatness ahead for our city. It is under great hands and great leadership. And we have done so many wonderful things that now that the year is ending and we are moving into two thousand and twelve, the year of downtown, we're going to be seeing the Smith Center open, City Hall opening, the Mob Museum, the Neon Museum. There's so many exciting things that are happening in this city. And they didn't happen without all the hard work and pulling together of these wonderful people that make Las Vegas the unique place that it is. So I wish you all the happiest and safest of holidays. Certainly, good health to each one of you. And may your lives be long, successful, your vacation, if you get one, restful, and the very best for two thousand and twelve. And never to forget our wonderful legal staff who keeps us honest and on the straight road. So thank you all. And council people, thank you very much. It's been a wonderful time for me. And I know, I can echo my husband's thoughts. This is a great city, and it's the only place to live. So thank you and Happy New Year. And with that, I will close this meeting. Thank you very much.